A themed kind of space game where you're just, there's like going to be a couple of different like asteroids coming at you and you shoot the correct answer and get points. And hopefully it will be a little bit more worked through, but that's the simplest idea of it.
Did you look at any other games for inspiration? I'm a parent of two elementary school boys and they really, I can't remember the name, but there's a math game that they loved where they like are fighting. You like basically are fighting people, but you have to do a math problem to like get your hit across. So anyway, have you looked at and seen other games or other things? What kind of research did you do?
Uh, yeah, when talking to the students, we talked to them, I think we're talking about prodigy math.
Yes.
Yeah, we talked to them about prodigy math, which they all loved. They had a lot of comments about that and that they really enjoyed. We also talked to them about S T math, which was the other end of the spectrum. We had a lot of negative feedback about that game. It was their favorite, but just taking both of those into account, trying to make sure that I get those positive aspects down and make sure to improve on the negative ones.
I'm going to jump in again real quick and say, what are your future aspirations? I think we all sat through a training probably at this point like four years ago where they were saying one of the biggest growing career fields is actually is game development. So what have you thought about?
Uh, I'm looking to study game design at George Mason University. So I'd hopefully like to get in that field, use the university to further my skills and hopefully get internships.
Awesome.
And a question for both of you is where do you see the next step of implementation of this? Do you see it through all the elementary schools? Do you see it as a project that you're working on and to just focus on Stone Robinson? Where do you see this going? I can see it go several different ways.
Uh, yeah, well, that's kind of the beauty of the idea I have here is I should be able to publish it just on public domain. So anyone who has the URL to this website can just type it in, immediately get access with no payments, no signups, no nothing, just totally free. Anyone with an internet connection or laptop, whether it be on the other side of the world or in the U.S.
That's great.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes.
Then start just adding in the pay a dollar to get the next thing paid dollars. Next level, next level.
And you say that, that's the problem with some math games is the advertisements and the pay piece. That's something Josh and I discussed earlier is we didn't want to go that route.
Okay. So it doesn't have any things like that in it?
No, there will be no advertisements, no payments. There's nothing. As long as you have that URL, you can jump to it and immediately start playing.
Are you going to keep track of how many users you have or?
Uh, yeah, the analytics of it will be definitely a very important part because when you get to like small numbers, 10, 20 kids maybe using it a day or a week, it's pretty easy to manage. But if it ever grew more, there would definitely be other concerns with it with maybe getting a server for them to use or various things like that. So yeah, the analytics will definitely be something to keep track of in the months after its initial like full release.
Okay, you might have answered this before, but before you move to the step that you've just described, will the other county schools be able to use this also? Will you expand it to the other county elementary schools?
Uh, yeah, once the actual like game is fully made and I've had gone back to the Stone Robinson students and had them test it again, it'll just be on that URL. That'll be the first place it's published. So even if it's just student, Stone Robinson students who know about it, that's where they'll find it and it'll just be telling other people about it to use it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Great work.
Thank you.
Just one more question. Have you done focus groups with teachers about it?
Um, we don't have like one dedicated focus group with teachers, but I've talked to some of the teachers who were there at Stone Robinson to try and also get their feedback.
And it's really used a friendly even for the teachers?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Now we'll move to announcements. Dr. Haas?
So I do have just a few announcements. Thank you. I did want to acknowledge that we continue to ask our school principals to come out to board meetings so they could be part of that. And tonight we do have Ashby Johnson from Journey Middle Schools here tonight, as well as you just saw Jeff from Center One, Jason Crutchfield from Brownsville Elementary School, Stacy England from Croze Elementary School, Jen Sublet from Western Albemarle High School, as well as Chad Ratliff from the Community Lab School. I don't think I missed anybody, did I? All right. So really pleased to have you all tonight. Thank you for coming out. I know it's a, you're have a busy schedule right now.
Ms. Carter from K-Tech, did you say her?
Oh, Stephanie's here. Oh, hey, Stephanie. So Stephanie Carter from K-Tech. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I do want to just take a moment to acknowledge that the Holly Mead Elementary School staff, I did have a really great visit there on Monday to walk about the school with the assistant principal Stephanie Provines and also our Rivanna District Representative Judy Lee joined me on the visit and she spent time with the principal Joe McCauley. I was able to visit Becky Brown's second grade, Lily Haw's kindergarten and Ann Lancaster's C Base class and really high quality instruction and really engaged students in those classes and really enjoyed the visit. And I want to thank the Holly Mead staff for having me on Monday. Last week I got out to Monticello High School and our chair, Graham Page, and our Scottsville District Representative Ellen Osborne visited the school with me and they were, again, they went out for a tour with Beth Costa and I went walking classrooms with Wendell Green and it was a really great visit, a lot of teamwork at the school, highly engaged staff and I want to thank them for that visit. Next Monday I'll be visiting Scottsville in the morning and Kate Acuff for the Jack Jewett District and Ellen again from Scottsville will be visiting with me and also the county administrator, Jeff Richardson will be, will be joining us for that visit. So I'm really looking forward to that. I did want to announce that our graduation rates have been put out there on the school quality profiles and our on-time graduation rate for the class of 2022 is 94.3% and it's above the state average. And for the last 14 out of 15 years, since they began publishing the state on-time graduation rates, we have been above the state average. This year Virginia's graduation rate was 92.1%. Not only were we above the state average overall, but in every single enrollment group, we were either above the state average or at the state average. Another key academic indicator that we have, there's two tiers of diplomas. There's a standard diploma and advanced studies diploma that requires more math, world languages. 64% of our students earned that diploma as opposed to 53% statewide. All of our demographic groups did well in comparison to their peers across Virginia. Among Hispanic students, students with disabilities, students from economically disadvantaged homes, English learners, on-time graduation rates in the division were higher in each group than the average rates across Virginia. Among black students, the division's on-time graduation rate matched the statewide average at 90.3%. In terms of individual school highlights, Monticello High's 93.3% on-time graduation rate for black students, Western Albemarle's rate of 92.9% for Hispanic students and 95.1% on-time graduation rate for students with disabilities at Albemarle High School. We also had a lower dropout rate than Virginia's average for all school divisions. We, our overall rate was 3.9% and considering that, you know, coming out of a year of returning back from online learning and the depths of the pandemic, that's extremely low, especially when you consider when I, when it came, first came downtown, our dropout rate was more than 15%. So back in 2010, we had 15% dropout rate. Let's see. One other point, talk a little bit about the SAT scores. We outscored Virginia and the nation all across the board on the SAT, but they also have a new indicator that's called a college readiness indicator and it's based on where the students land with their math and their, their reading scores. And let's see, 85% of our seniors, eight out of 10, better than eight out of 10, met the college board benchmark. And this is for, when we report our SAT scores, it's only for the students that report back to the school. Many, many of our students go out and take the SATs and they don't report it back to the school. They, they, they get their scores and then they decide where they're going to send, send the results. So I would dare say it's higher than that. Virginia's average was 83%, so we were better than the rest of Virginia and it was 68% across the country. I also want to make note, and you'll hear more about it tonight, that next year we're going to expand our career readiness program offerings to all students in grades 10 through 12. We're going to be providing open admission to any sophomore, junior or senior in career learning communities. Each career learning community represents professional areas with the highest potential for high-quality job opportunities, both locally and nationally. They're based upon state research and division surveys of middle school students over the past four years. Currently, we, as you know, we have four academies, one for math, engineering and science, one data dedicated to health and medical services, one that focuses on environmental studies and one for information and communications technology. Each will now become a career learning community and they'll be joined by concentrated student project-based studies in architecture, urban design and building construction, the arts, education and human development, entrepreneurship, business and innovation, geospatial technology, analytics, logistics, transportation, global leadership, law and social justice and hospitality, eateries, amusement and recreation and tourism. On one final note, for next year, for the third consecutive year, we'll be offering free of charge SAT tests for all juniors. We began doing that two years ago because of the, the big gaps we had in participation among our demographic groups. So we offer it on a school day and we offer it for free and we've seen improvements in our participation. And Dr. McGlaughlin will have more about that when we do the state of the division report. And we continue to offer the PSAT to our sophomores so that they can practice and get ready, you know, they can qualify for a national merit scholarship. So I know that was a lot to read, but especially with so many of our staff members here tonight, just want to thank you for all the outstanding work you do, whether you are a high school, you know, a lot of times when we look at the graduation rate, SATs, things like that, it's, we're thinking high school, but that work, especially for students who come to our schools behind, really starts in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, all the way through elementary, middle and high school. So every one of you, whether you are working at the school teaching or driving the students to school safely or feeding students or taking care of their health needs, you're, you're the ones that make that happen. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. In addition to visiting Monticello about 10 days ago, or last Monday I visited Albemarle High School when they initiated a program called Reframing the Narrative. And that program at Albemarle is being led by Ms. Perla Early, Ms. Lamika Bonds, Dr. Mary and some other staff members at the school. And the program is designed to try to close the achievement gap at Albemarle, in addition to trying to make the students more aware of school resources and community resources that they might be able to use. I think this group is going to try to meet once per nine weeks and it was really an inspiring moment for that first meeting on last Tuesday to see how many people were there. So it was really good to see this initiative at Albemarle and I congratulate all of those people who were sort of responsible for starting this program at Albemarle. Do any other board members have any announcements?
Yeah, I'll do a quick one. I know I wasn't at the board meeting last time, so thank you guys for proceeding without me. But prior to that, I was able to attend an event that was thrown by, I call him Eric and I'm worried I'm not going to pronounce his last name wrong, Dr. Iwazari, who is our director of engagement. It was the K-Tech Partner, Community Partner Kickoff and it was one of the most well-attended events that I have been to of community partners and potential leads for how we can get our students involved and into careers that work for them. So I just wanted to say thank you for that invitation and I'm really excited about the work that is coming up.
I also attended a K-Tech sort of event. John, I think maybe I saw you leaving that day too. I was able to go to K-Tech's Technical Eats food bus. I enjoyed a chili dog and had that Jack and Diane song like on a loop in my head ever since then. Children of the eighties will get that. But it was, it was really nice to see the students and staffers out there making food in a big bus. So I enjoyed that.
I also had the best peach milkshake I've ever had in my life. It was all peach and a little bit of milk and it was just great. The whole event was wonderful.
I had a very sad miss on the Croze Walk School. I think you guys all know I had a fever, so. That was fun. I thought it would be unkind to show up and like give high fives to children when I had a fever. So my wife, DJ Stobel, dressed as a giant chicken. And I just want to congratulate not only my wife, but all of the students who walked at Croze. It was a huge event apparently and I think it's just a great example of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Dobert. And I think Ms. Lee and Mr. Carroll has made us all hungry by telling us about the chili dog and the peach milkshake. So thank you all. Is there any other school board that's who can do that business at this time? All right, if not, moving to public comment, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Chair Page. I am going to switch to reading the summary of the public comment guidelines that is, that is available on the electronic school board because I imagine that's what people look at when they're signing up for public comment. And I know that ours are kind of in a need of an upgrade. So I'm going to go ahead and read that one because it's a little more detailed. We invite We invite and actively seek the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provide for time in our business meetings to hear from our residents and community members. During public comment, we expect respectful and on-topic comments. Disruptive behavior from speakers or from members of the public in attendance is not going to be tolerated. Anyone who willfully disrupts this meeting in a manner that prevents or interferes with the ability of others to provide comments may be ejected by the chair. Public testimony guidelines are as follows. Speaker should adhere to the following protocol. State your name and address. Artistic or magisterial district is fine. Please address comments to the school board as a whole. Limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. You can give written statements or material in support of your comments to the school board clerk, and it will be disseminated to all of us, or you can always email it as well, or you can mail it, snail mail, if you like to do that. If there, we don't, we have nine speakers today, so I don't need to go over what happens if we have ten speakers. Every speaker will have three minutes to speak. There is a light system up here that is green, yellow, red. The yellow comes on when you have one minute left, and the red is when your time is done. In order to maintain respect for all points of views, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support. You can raise your hands, or, or speak, or hold up posters, which I think some people might have in the back, but just so that we can hear comments. And I believe that covers everything that would apply. So with that, I have nine speakers. I am going to go ahead and just list off the order so you know when you're coming up and you're not wondering. I have Susan Carter first, followed by Marcella Brightson, then Mary Miller, Sarah Harris, Randy Zacherson, Becca Saxon, Jordan Barr, Vernon Leckie, and Nancy Moore. So with that, Ms. Carter, if you are in the audience.
My name is Susan Carter. My address is twelve seventy-seven Branchlands Drive. I am an employee in the Transportation Department for almost thirty years. Tonight, I will share my story with you, not to garner sympathy, but to offer you a glimpse into how so many of us in the Transportation Department are not afforded the decency and respect that all deserve. After our son was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in November of twenty twenty-one, his partner, also a county employee, and I discussed the best options for his caretaking with the needs of the county and the students weighing heavily on us. We have worked diligently and we believe successfully to minimize the disruptions that our absences would cause the school system. We have managed this through his many chemotherapy and radiation treatments, his Whipple surgery, hospitalizations, and the aggressive chemotherapy he is receiving now. On September twenty-eighth, I submitted a leave request for September twenty-ninth, afternoon, high and middle routes only, one hour and fifteen minutes, covered by the FMLA, as our son required my assistance, my first absence this school year. I was advised by Veronda Wendleton ATS that I needed to send my route coverage to dispatch. Eventually, I was able to arrange coverage for the open route that I had been voluntarily covering all year. I advised dispatch and Wendleton that the lead driver at AHS should find coverage for my AHS and journey run. The next day, September twenty-ninth, at six AM, I received an email from Fanny Smith stating that Wendleton had advised her of my request, and I needed to work with another lead driver to get coverage. I contacted HR for clarification on coverage expectations, receiving a response from Ms. Miller on September twenty-ninth, which read in part, FML or emergency leave would be the exceptions to requiring a driver to find coverage. On October third, William Shiflett sent an email which obviously contradicts that statement. One hour and fifteen minutes needed off from work by a thirty-year veteran employee to care for her child that has cancer. My hope is that after hearing me, the many employees that have stories to be told will now have the courage to do so. Perhaps then you will accept that money is not the driving force behind drivers leaving, and they are leaving as they are no longer willing to be treated so inhumanely. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up, Ms. Carter.
You're welcome.
The next speaker will be Ms. Brightson.
It's good to see you all again. I'm sure that you have missed me, but the start of the school year was intense, and I'm just now beginning to get my head above water. I'm here today to talk to you about the Employee Voice and Action Committee, EVAC, as one of the people who worked through the whole process over the summer. Read up on best practices, talked to many coworkers, and struggled with the transparency of it all. I'm standing here today to tell you, this is not what you think it is, and it is not going to work the way you want it to. I can count on one hand the number of employees who know about the EVAC committee outside of the people participating, or those who directly know someone who is, and that number is two. This is not going to be representative of the employees in Alamo County, and the process was set up to fail from the start. The invitations were sent out late, they were not specific about compensation or time commitment, which is a barrier for many, and it came at the tail end of the year that sent many employees running for different jobs, or at least the summer. During the process, valid points such as what can we actually change with this committee that isn't handed down policy were deflected, and questions like how do we make or hold the school board accountable to us and our feedback were pushed off, and we were told that would be figured out later and later and later. Even now, in the EVAC process document, it says nothing about quantifiable accountability, no requirement of anyone to follow through on suggestions or answer questions, and even the agenda and summaries are submitted to the consent agenda, which is rarely, if ever, openly discussed during meetings. All of this process and no guarantee of a meaningful outcome. Eventually, I watched as one by one, people with genuine ideas, years of experience, actual conflict resolution training, mediation skills, and the passion to improve things in Alamo County dropped out. What are we left with? We are left with a shell of an impact. I know that all of you join the school board to make an impact, to make things better than they were, and to work to lead Almo County into a safer, more inclusive future. Now is your chance to make a lasting impact. But you are being told by people whom EVAC does not represent that it is an avenue for meaningful change for employees. But if none of us know about it, it's happening, or have very much input in it, and there's no legal or systemic obligation towards it, how is it going to represent and protect us? I've heard you all say time and time again that the students are the most important thing about ACPS, and I agree. But we do not show them that when we believe, that we believe that when we refuse to take action against future threats such as impending anti-trans and gender expansive legislation and book banning, or work to actively support and empower teachers with the legal tools to defend them. Listen to those in the field. Over seventy percent of the county's employees said that they believed in the AEA and in collective bargaining as the best thing for the future. It gives leverage to the people who care the most, the people in the trenches, the teachers, and students. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Brightson. The next speaker is Mary Miller, I believe is walking up.
My name is Mary Miller. This fall, I was placed at Greer Elementary School as a student teacher. On Wednesday, September twenty-eighth, I wore the shirt I'm wearing right now to Greer. It says, Protect Trans Kids Over a Rainbow of the Trans Pride Colors. Less than two hours after arriving at Greer, the assistant principal pulled me into her office. Evidently, a Greer staff member had complained about my shirt. She informed me that following the guidance of the county attorney, she had deemed my shirt to be espousing a quote, "non-neutral political viewpoint," end quote, that was in violation of the county's code of conduct. It is the job of educators, she said, to remain neutral. The principal affirmed the decision of his assistant principal. I am a queer woman with a trans and non-binary partner who uses they/them pronouns. I had chosen not to be open with my students at Greer about my family, despite observing straight teachers at Greer share about their spouses and families, despite the fact that I was asking second-grade students to share about and write about their families with me. But when I was told I could not wear a shirt that expresses, expresses support for trans kids, I decided that I no longer wanted to hide myself and my family. So I asked the principal, can I speak openly with my students about my family, using my partner's correct pronouns and acknowledging their gender, their gender identity? He answered that his recommendation for all staff was, quote, "We share in general terms, and we don't initiate these conversations," end quote. Trans and gender expansive kids need, like all kids, to be valued and safe at school. As a particularly vulnerable group, they deserve to know that their teachers openly support them, not just as kids, but as trans kids. They deserve to see themselves represented when they look at their teachers, to have role models who are proud and authentically themselves in age-appropriate ways. They deserve to see queer and trans adults living normal, joyful lives. As is clear from this school board's own policy protecting transgender and gender expansive students, as well as your commendable public statement last week, objecting to proposed state policy that would reduce protections for those students, the school board is not neutral when it comes to protecting trans kids, for good reason. Supporting trans youth is often, tragically, a matter of life and death. If this division allows its schools to prevent educators from expressing their support for trans kids, from speaking openly about their own trans loved ones, much less their own gender identities, our trans and gender expansive, expansive students will receive that message loud and clear. And to them, that message will not be neutral. It may be the difference between a child who is able to exist as their authentic self and a child who suffers in silence and shame, between a child who lives and a child who does not.
Ms. Miller? If you could please wrap up.
Yes, I just have one question. Can I please read it? I just ask you, how are you going to ensure that we can support trans students in every classroom and school in this county? Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies, I didn't see when it beeped red, and it wasn't still red, so then I was like, what is, sorry. Thank you for those comments, Ms. Miller. The next speaker is Sarah Harris, who I see walking up. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sarah Harris. I'm from the Whitehall District. Good evening, members of the school board, Mr. Holden. Earlier this week, we recognized National Coming Out Day. This is a day in which we celebrate the folks who are free and safe to live an authentic life of self-expression, identity, and love, and recognize those who aren't. In the year 2022, in the United States of America, too many people cannot safely come out. They are forced to hide their true selves from families, communities, and workplaces in which they fear they will be rejected. Many of these folks are kids. According to the 2022 Trevor Project Youth Mental Health Survey, fewer than one in three transgender and non-binary youth found their home to be gender-affirming. These kids reported attempting suicide at more than double the rate of those who felt high family support. Despite their difficult home situations, some of these brave kids are able to live authentically at school thanks to welcoming environments and affirming friends and school staff. These kids, the ones who find their schools to be safe and affirming, will experience significantly lower rates of suicidal ideation and self-harm. Safe and affirming schools literally save lives. The school board recently released a powerful statement in support of trans kids and the existing ACPS policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students, for which, as an advocate for LGBTQ students, I'm so grateful. I'm also grateful for the many visible and vocal teacher allies across our school division. These teachers, who signal their allyship to queer kids through pins, lanyards, badges, pride flags, safe space stickers, and T-shirts, are letting kids know who they can trust to be their authentic selves with. We know that a child who has even one safe grown-up has a significantly improved mental health outcome that can last throughout their lifetime. Protecting kids, even specifically trans kids, is not a political cause, and creating safe spaces for kids is not woke. Caring for kids is literally the bare minimum that teachers and school staff commit to when entering the profession. We must be mindful not to engage in the dangerous national practice of politicizing kids based on their identity. We must have the courage to speak out against harmful and discriminatory policies and practices, and even more importantly, to back up our words with actions. We must empower teachers to create classrooms in schools in which all kids can be comfortable, safe, and ready to learn. We must boldly, loudly, and courageously protect trans kids. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Harris. The next speaker is Mr. Zacherson. So I do not see anyone standing up. Mr. Zacherson, if you're out there, this is the time. Okay, moving on, Becca Saxon, who I know is here.
My name is Becca Saxon, and my address is on file. The Alamo Education Association has received several calls and emails from members concerned about the recent edict sent to the staff at one school regarding your attorney's interpretation of policy GD on political activities as relevant to staff actions to create a supportive school climate for trans and gender expansive students. Policy GD clearly states, that's the trans policy, the board recognizes that, oh no, the political one, the board recognizes that school time and school property should not be used for partisan political purposes. The protection of trans children is not a political issue, and turning educators' actions towards support and protection into one, into one is in direct policy of, of, direct violation of policy JBA, the policy on the treatment of transgender and gender expansive students, which says, educators play an essential role in creating a supportive school culture and advocating for the well-being of students. Schools must be proactive in creating a culture that respects and values all students and fosters understanding of gender identity and expression within the school community. One step in creating that culture is visible in explicit displays so that LGBTQ students know they are valued and included. The current situation cannot be left unaddressed. The timing of your press release on your commitment to the policy while your attorney was undermining it behind the scenes makes educators nervous that if they teach a lesson that ends with parents getting upset, they will not get the support they need to work through the controversy. Additionally, LGBTQ educators are now questioning whether their full authentic selves are truly welcome in ACPS. To prevent this from happening again, I would suggest that you empower your equity office to broaden the scope of the antiracism decision-making tool piloted last year so that building-level decisions and policy implementation efforts can be examined through an equity lens instead of simply being looked at as legal or liability issues. As you dig into specific decisions and how they will affect LGBTQ students and educators, the VEA has a fact sheet, which I'll give you in a second, on the trans model policies that may be useful. If I can be of further assistance, please let me know. The AEA and I are ready and willing to partner with you and the central office staff as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Saxon. We have three speakers left. Next up will be, oh, you're bringing stuff over. The next come, or the next speaker will be Jordan Barr.
All right, good evening. So this is a little bit unusual, but go with it. I've just come before the Lord of Heaven and Earth today as your humble servant. We petition you today that your will be done on earth in and Alamo County, just as it is in heaven. I come before you in your courts of heaven, asking for your justice, not man's justice be served in Alamo County and the public schools. I hereby take my mantle of spiritual authority as a father of county students and Alamo County community member, and I say, Father God, I invite you back into our schools, and I pray that all students, all races, and, you know, rich or poor, would come to understand their true identity in you. We repent on behalf of a fatherless nation, and I stand as repentant father, and as we see the fatherlessness has caused such confusion in our youth. We pray for the protection of our county, teachers, our school board, our parents, students, bus drivers, you know, people that work in cafeteria, everybody. Let our schools be a place for learning and enlightenment, and that our students will no longer be used as pawns in a political battles. It is now time for us adults and leaders to lead and guide our youth into all truth and to fight for the eternal souls of our children. Let us work together. Let us stop the bickering and the us-against-them mentality and fault-finding. Our students deserve to be listened to and not coerced into an agenda. Let all of us work together. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Barr. Mr. Leckie, I know you're out there. Mr. Leckey, I know you're out there.
My name is Vernon Leckey, and I'm president of the Albemarle Education Association. Tonight, I wanted to speak regarding the high school academic schedules report that was provided to you in your consent agenda. The recommendation from the authors of the report is to maintain current high school schedules and not return to a seven-perioded-plus-one advisory class. This decision was made based on reports from student feedback, committee work, staff feedback, and an impact study of class size and weighted grades. The original decision to move away from the seven-plus-one schedule was made before I was an employee in the county. Numerous people who have been employed at the county at that time have told me that this decision was made by the school board at the time, almost 13 years ago, due to financial concerns from the recession. The decision was made by the school board very promptly, without a lot of input from the staff and community. That decision had high school teachers teach an additional class of students without additional compensation. It also decreased the amount of advisory and remediation time given to students. The current schedule that we have is an eight-period schedule with a half a period of advisory per day. This has shortened class time, shortened intervention time, and shortened high schools' teachers' planning time. Regarding the staff feedback piece of this report, I will provide you with the context of how that was presented to me. The last training day before school, staff at my school were told at the end of a long meeting that the county wanted feedback about the possible return to a seven-plus-one schedule. The explanation for the possible return to a seven-plus-one schedule was framed to us in a way that seemed heavily favored towards a particular perspective or response from the staff. I, in particular, was frustrated that we had seven days of professional development trainings and getting ready for school, and yet this feedback survey was only given to us the day before school started, during, for many of us, is the busiest time of the year, and we were told the survey needed to be completed by the end of the week. We had, at our meeting, two staff members speak their thoughts about the shift, but this occurred very briefly. I talked with numerous teachers at my building about this prior to submitting the survey and after this current report was published. Many elective teachers expressed concerns that students wouldn't have the options to take electives with the reduced class sizes. Many core-level teachers that have experienced both the seven-plus-one and the current schedule told me that they preferred the prior schedule and believed we soon would be returning to the seven-plus-one schedule in the 2023-2024 school year. They were in the depression that this was the plan from the Division over the last few years. My hope tonight was just to give you this additional information about the matter and to provide the context for how this information was prevented to us. I encourage the Division to connect further with teachers at the high schools to truly get a better sense of what kind of schedules the ACPS high school teaching staff wish to have, to better help with their teaching conditions and the students' learning conditions. I and others are also willing to help assist the Division collect this information and staff feedback about the return to a seven-plus-one schedule. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Leckey. The last speaker that we have is Nancy Muir.
Good evening. Yes, it's Nancy Muir, and I live in the Whitehall District. Thank you for your time tonight. As you are aware, I want of the parental right to review sexually explicit instructional material. It's Senate Bill Number 656. That was enacted in the 2022 Virginia Assembly and is put into law by Governor Youngkin. So it's mandated to be implemented by January 1, 2022. This law covers the materials in all classes, not just family life, education. It refers to sexually explicit books, which might be selected for reading in English class, or topics that might be highlighted in a history class. So the law is to be implemented for all grade levels as well. Generally, the school board will have a two-month process for implementing a new policy, and since we only have two months now prior to January 1, I'm asking that the school board take action immediately to develop a model policy that's consistent with or comprehensive, more comprehensive than the model policy that was developed by the Virginia Department of Education. The policy is drafted, should ensure advanced parental notification of intended use of instructional materials with sexually explicit content. It should ensure parents have the ability to inspect and review instructional materials that include sexually explicit content, also including online and video and print materials. And it should ensure that parents have the opportunity to select for their child the option of alternative instructional materials and related academic activities that do not contain sexually explicit content. Parental authority is a constitutional right under the law of Virginia. We also know that from multiple studies and research, parental involvement improves students' academic performance and overall healthiness. I will look forward to seeing an ACPS policy for Senate Bill 656 on the November school board agenda, so that we will be afforded the 30 days of public comment prior to January 1. Thank you for your attention to this action item.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Muir. That concludes public comment. Thank you to everyone who took the time to be here and to express your thoughts. I know I appreciate it, and I believe everyone else does as well. We like hearing from you, so thank you.
We will now have Human Resources Hiring Update led by Dr. Claire Kaiser.
Good evening, board members. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Tonight, we have with us here members of our Human Resources Talent Team to give an update for the hiring for the 21-22 school year. As with everything that we do in human resources, our strategic plan guides the work that we do. I am drawn to the words in our mission, working together as a team. Our employees are the team that is critical and crucial to the success of that mission, and the ability to hire the right people is paramount in the work that we do in our Human Resources Department. Our third strategic goal, focusing on equitable and transformative resources, states that we will attract and develop and retain the highest-quality staff. Tonight, you will hear about our current state in hiring, probably one of the most challenging hiring years that we have had in the time that I've been doing this work. With that, you will also hear some plans for our future work around recruitment and retention. To get us started, I would like to turn this over to our Executive Director of Human Resources, Dan Redding.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kaiser, and good evening, board members. I'm Dan Redding, Executive Director of Human Resources. We have a good bit of data and information to share with you here tonight related to our hiring for the past year, and on the screen you can see our agenda. Do note our major goals that we keep in mind as we go out to hire for teachers and support staff.
Excuse me, Dan, can you pull the microphone up a little?
Absolutely. Sorry about that. So there are significant highlights this year. We continued a number of very successful strategies from the past, including our partnerships with the African-American Teaching Fellows and the Teachers of Promise, and we focused on early contracts as a way to bring highly qualified teachers onboard. We added to the variety of job fairs that we recruit at, both virtual and in-person. The reorganization of HR and separation into being focused just on the school division brings this wonderful talent team to you here tonight, and they're focused on recruiting and retaining educators and support staff. Other highlights are the addition of school-based substitutes and a substitute coordinator, which support the addressing of the substitute shortage. And despite a very difficult hiring environment, we successfully filled a number of leadership positions this year. But it did remain a difficult hiring environment, and we'll share data with you around that. There are significant impacts on our ability to hire special ed teachers and bus drivers that persist. Late resignations and leaves of absence in August led to higher-than-typical turnover and difficulty filling positions while the pool was really at its smallest. And daily subs remain a challenge and have wide-ranging impacts as teachers and support staff fill in to ensure continuity of instruction for students when there's not enough subs. We have two charts that we want to share with you that illustrate some of the challenges in our current recruiting pool. One related to undergraduate and graduate students earning degrees in education across the country. You can see a decline over the past 10 to 12 years. The other is related to the demographics of the pool of people graduating with education degrees. You can see that the demographic makeup of that pool does not reflect our student body and our community, so from a smaller pool, we are looking to recruit a diverse and representative teaching force out of a pool that is not representative. To give you a lot of that data around our hiring, I'd like to bring up Dr. Jason Sears.
Good evening. This slide is an overview and comparison of new teacher hires this season. I'd like to highlight just a few points. You will see we hired 207 new teachers. Thirty-two of those were teachers of color. Fifty-three of our new hires were beginning their career in education, 10 of which were teachers of color. I would also like to draw your attention to the fact that our teaching force continues to be highly qualified, as well as highly educated, with 68% of our new teaching staff holding masters or doctorate degrees. Finally, I would like to point out, I would like to point your attention to the increase in our gender diversity in our new teacher hires. We have continued to pay close attention to diversifying our teaching force. In almost every year since 2017-2018, we have seen a positive change in the total percentage of teachers of color. In the past hiring year, 11.32% of our teaching staff were teachers of color. We have demonstrated a cumulative increase of 1.28% since we began tracking this statistic. This cumulative change over time does show continued growth and represents positive movement during this difficult hiring market. Diversifying our teaching force will continue to be a focal point, and we will continue to develop new strategies, build new relationships, and institute new initiatives. In addition to improving hiring practices, we will also have a deliberate and intentional focus on retaining our current teaching staff. Our retention strategies will be highlighted a little later in this presentation. We have continued to hire high-quality teachers, administrators, and support staff, including increases in teachers of color. Our focus on hiring is evidenced by our total overall teacher vacancy rate of less than 2%, which compares favorably to other jurisdictions, even in these the most challenging of hiring times. Partnering our HR department with administrators and hiring managers reinforces our ability to continue to attract, secure, and retain high-quality diverse staff, and we believe our hiring initiatives will continue our forward movement. Conversations with applicants and new hires lead us to understand our district's focus on anti-racism and equity, as well as our commitment to competitive pay are significant points of interest. As mentioned before, our total school-based teaching vacancy rate is under 2%. However small, we are committed to becoming fully staffed. On this slide, you will see our school-based teaching vacancies. Not identified here are also unfortunately six vacancies for school-based substitute teachers and several long-term substitute positions as well. We are committed to filling these positions with qualified candidates as soon as possible. As part of our Human Resources reorganization, we have a dedicated staff member that will focus, that will impart focus on recruiting and retaining substitute teachers. Like many divisions across the state, we are seeing declining numbers of applicants. While many positions are still drawing healthy numbers of candidates, we had many jobs posted this year that have very small applicant pools. Here are some examples. We received four applicants for a high school world language teacher and one applicant for a middle school world language teacher. A middle school English position yielded only four applicants. And finally, an elementary school ESOL teacher position only garnered two applicants. Of our eight current special education vacancies, we have a total of six applicants across these pools. To note, those six applicants are not unique individuals and may represent applicants that have not been screened for licensure, which could further narrow an already shallow pool. In comparison, if we look back over the last two to three years, each of those pools would have been much more robust. Across our support staff areas, we have been able to hire a number of individuals as well. That said, the examples shown here demonstrate that the challenges of hiring extended beyond classroom teachers as we continue to actively recruit to fill all vacancies. The hiring update for our school's support staff demonstrates a high percentage of diverse employees hired for this school year. In addition to being racially diverse, our school support staff is also culturally diverse, demonstrating a growing need for additional language and translation support. Internal promotions and transfers supported our retention of qualified school leaders. Our commitment to diversity extends to our leadership team. External hires reflect our commitment to diversity, as 50% of our externally hired principals, 100% of our externally hired assistant principals, and 40% of our central office and support department were our individuals of color. I've just shared our current state. Before we share our future work, I'd like to pause for any questions.
I had a few comments, I guess, or we just taking questions. I guess I would like to ground, for those in the audience, and just so we know, on the diverse, why the diversity piece is so important, is because it's one of the few research-backed ways that supports targeting achievement gaps, is to have children actually have teachers that are representative of their own experience. So I applaud how we've gotten better male, more male teachers, so that our male students can have access to male teachers as they go through their career. I take a little bit of issue with the positive spin on the 1% increase over five years on our diverse hires.
I understand.
So that's wrapping, so I guess my question would be, are we doing exit surveys? Do we understand, because actually, we lost three of those teachers this year, so are we understanding where they are going or why we can't keep them?
Yes, the short answer is yes, and actually, we'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation, so not only is that answer yes, but we will continue to make that a more robust process as well. And you'll hear a little bit more about that.
Going along with, you know, the number 1.28% in the last five years, I mean, that is, you know, very, very low, and that wasn't what the expectations, I understand there was a pandemic. But part of this is, you were giving us numbers for the low applicant pools, and I don't know that you can answer this right now, but I sure would love to get, you know, some sort of an explanation as to why these were so low, where were these people going if they weren't coming to us, and why weren't they going, coming to us, and they were attracted to go somewhere else? Because, you know, with all respect in the world, 1.28% over five years isn't what you would call acceptable.
I agree, and hopefully I can spend some more time and bring that back to you and the board as well. Thank you. Want to make sure I captured those three questions. Okay, thank you.
Just one more question, excuse me. I know that in, we've been told over the past few years, we've reached out more strongly to the HCBU, you know, campuses, and what are, what is the array of methods that we recruit? Not just diverse students, I mean... Not, not just diverse students, I mean, teachers, but everybody? And what is the most productive? Has going to the campuses yielded the results that we wanted? Or do we need to be doing something else or in addition to?
Wait, yeah, well, clearly we haven't result, yielded the results that we have wanted. But we have, well, we'll talk a little bit about upcoming, but I'll, Mr. Redding, talk about current.
Sure. So I think some of the strategies that have moved us forward are the focus on early contracts and the partnerships with African-American teaching fellows where we're hiring the vast majority of the pre-service teachers that are graduating. Likewise, with teachers of promise, we've been able to build our cadre of diverse teachers through those. Some of what is coming up in the presentation are the strategies that are underway now. Dr. Sears has been doing a lot of relationship building with HBCUs in Virginia and looking at ways to leverage partnerships with them to bring their graduates and even their pre-service teachers here and, and get them interested in Albemarle and the work we're doing.
Dan, maybe this is a question for you. How many people are going through and getting their degrees in education but get jobs not in education? Or may, maybe they're going to Google or something? Because obviously, the pay difference would be significant.
Yeah.
Or people, I know that applications are down, but of those who are graduating, what percentage go into education? Do we know that?
I don't know that we have data on that tonight. We'd have to do some research to see what studies are out there. That's, that's possibly not the easiest data to get our hands on.
Right, right. I didn't imagine we had it, but it may exist.
I have one other comment. I really appreciate the transparency and I know it's, it's hard to put bad numbers out there, but I just, it struck me, the difference, it's great that we have an under 2% vacancy for our teaching staff. That's very commendable in a very hard market right now. But I find it telling that our support staff has such high vacancy rates. And I think as a board, we should probably be asking ourselves what we need to do to make that a little bit more evened out. There's a lot of vacancies there.
Hence the compensation study.
Coming up in 30 minutes.
We'll talk a little bit about our, our future state now.
Good evening, Chair Page, Board, Dr. Haas, Mr. Holden. I am Chad Ratliff and I'm happy to talk a little bit more about some plans that we have moving forward. Our HCPS Human Resources team will be focusing on Grow Your Own cohorts that will identify and support our dedicated non-teaching staff interested in becoming classroom teachers or special education teachers. Programs like Teachers For Tomorrow and our High School Career Learning Communities are opportunities for building a pipeline of educators. You'll hear more about Career Learning Communities later this, this evening from our instructional team. We'll continue building connections directly with prospective teachers through our use of Handshake, which is a newly, relatively newly acquired college recruiting tool widely utilized across the country, as well as direct outreach through an increased social media presence and networking with universities. We are in the process of planning an HCPS in-person and virtual job fair for both classified and licensed staff. And we will continue to build strong relationships, as you've already heard, with HBCU, HBCUs and groups like the African-American Teaching Fellows in order to create opportunities for diverse staff, not only with regular, regular contracts, but also utilizing early contracts. Finally, we will begin our ADP onboarding process, which will make the hiring process significantly more user-friendly and efficient. And I'm happy to introduce you to Dr. Sarah Flynn to talk a little bit more about our retention strategies.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Sarah Lynn and I'm the new Talent Retention and DEI Program Manager. As we see the national trends towards fewer people entering the profession of education, it is even more critical than ever to focus on retention. As part of my job, I will focus on implementing stay interviews and enhancing our exit interviews. We will continue to utilize the data collected from the Gallup Engagement Survey and combine that with the stay and exit interviews, giving us specific data to move forward with. This will really inform potential programming such as working on burnout prevention with existing wellness and EAP services. Partnering with the Department of Professional Development, we will focus employee development on individual leadership alongside content and curriculum. And finally, we're going to work to develop manager hiring and leadership practices that are focused through the lens of retention and DEI. Thank you all so much for listening. And are there any further questions?
What are the exit surveys saying?
I'm in day 18 of the position. What we really want to look at is starting to track a process of when did an individual start to begin to think about leaving and what was kind of the final straw so that we can track their process and their journey and maybe be able to see some trends. And may, I feel like I'm such a loud talker. And maybe be able to see some trends in where people are beginning to have issues so that we can be preventative. So what we're going to start to collect in the exit data will hopefully allow us to then not just be reactionary, but solve problems on a greater scale.
So do we have the data of the exit surveys for the teachers that have left already? Or is this new, we're going to be doing exits?
We're going to be doing it. So what we do, correct. What we have now has been aligned with the state exit data.
And that, what does that convey?
Sure. So what that shares is unfortunately only half of the teaching staff that exited filled out the surveys. So it's an incomplete data set to start with. What it shows is that we had a lot of relocations. And then the second thing is looking at people taking individual breaks. And the individual breaks could have been to care for a child, a family member, or themselves.
I'm looking forward to finding out more with enhanced service.
Me too.
Are you going to include in the exit survey, I'm over here, questions about housing cost, student debt, and those types of questions which may impact what kinds of jobs people want to stay in?
Likely yes. We haven't gotten too far into that process yet, but we do want to keep it short enough that they will answer. So finding the most critical information. I'm happy to hear your input on what you would like to hear in that survey as well.
Okay, with the Grow Your Own process, has that been started or have you set in place the steps that we'd be needing for that?
Actually, plans are pretty well underway and there's going to be some announcements rolling out between the Superintendent's Advisory Bulletin next week and the compass to start letting staff know this is coming, solicit interest, and start planning for funding. I believe funding, we're looking at the PD RP, so the Professional Development Reimbursement Program, and some other potential sources that will support our classified staff who are very interested in obtaining licensure.
And if I could just do an add-on there, one of the things that makes the Grow Your Own program something that we can jump into pretty quickly this year is the fact that last year in the budget, the board did allocate money for our classified professional development funds. And so the funds do exist for us to be able to get that program rolling. So we thank you for that. It does help us move more quickly through that.
Dr. Kaiser, if the board, going into the budget process, if the board wanted to fund that program fully so that paraprofessionals that are seeking to become teachers can do it for free, is that, is that an option?
We can definitely look at that through the funding requests. Any other questions while we're in this part?
Maybe one other one. I'm not sure what the name of this is, but at, at one time, I think we would, you would go to job fairs and offer a contract onsite.
Those are called, those are what we call our early contracts. What we typically do is not necessarily at job fairs, but we, we use, we use job fairs and other means like the handshake that, that was talked about as a means to start building relationships with people and to entice them to learn more about Alamo County. And then that eventually leads them to an early contract. One of the things that we always like to do with an early contract candidate is make sure that our administrators have had the opportunity to at least meet them and do a, either a formal or informal interview to make sure that, you know, we see that that's a good fit. That said, as we, to your point, that was a couple of years ago, as we were going to career fairs and things like that. Now, as we are in an even more critical time when it comes to hiring, I think that that is something, especially in our critical shortage areas, especially special education, especially, you know, mathematics, world languages, the, the positions in particular that we know that we are typically challenged to find highly qualified individuals for, we will use those, we will definitely do, I anticipate that we will do early contracts much more liberally than we have in the past.
And with the HCBUs, do you go to, may I, adjoining states too, especially North Carolina?
That is something that we have looked to spread out. We, when we really started the partnerships, we started right in Virginia, but I do think that we, you know, we have talked about looking up and down the entire East Coast in particular.
I'd just like to, to restate something that over the last few years, Ms. Carlson and I have kind of beat the drum on a bit. And that is that the importance of having teachers of color, you know, is so important to, obviously to, to our students and where they can see, you know, themselves in, in those positions. And the African-Americans make up about 11% ballpark, I'm just rounding on all of these, of our students and about 5.4, 5.5% of our teachers. And our Hispanic population represents about 15% of our students and less than 3% of our educators. I'm not sure, I don't have the, the numbers for, for Asians and dual races in front of me. I, I just want to really stress the importance of not, not leaving out, you know, the, and this is not to, to put anything bad in terms of efforts for black teachers, but there are other students who need to see people too, who, who look like them. And we've been kind of beating that drum for a while and it hasn't really gone anywhere. So I'd ask you to expand and find other ways that you could reach out to, to those people as well, because it's so important, as you know.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
And just to open one thing to John, what you said, which I would say I agree all, with all of it, but it's also very important for our white students. So, and I think that gets lost in this conversation as well.
And that is definitely what the research shows, is that all students benefit from having teachers of color. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Well, we appreciate your time for that. And just a reminder, we will be sharing the full Human Resources Annual Report and that's where you will see a much further, much further depth as far as breakdown of demographics of each of our hires as well as retention data and, and other human resources related efforts for our staff.
So as you're closing out, I just wanted to take a moment to commend the Human Resources Department. I know we can look at many of these things through a glass half-empty. However, you have, since July, began to build your own department. You've been short-staffed. You started using ADP for payroll during the winter time last year. You adopted Kronos for our timekeeping, which is a major undertaking and project. And really, during the time that I've worked in Alamo County Schools since 2004, we've really, back then, would pay a lot of lip service to recruiting and hiring for diversity. Really is only within the last five or six years that we've actually started to track it. And so we've all offered different perspectives, but if 20 years ago, we had started tracking it and grew at a rate of a half a percent per year, you know, we'd have, we'd be 10% better now. So I guess the thing that I would say is that, I mean, from my perspective, I didn't hear anybody celebrating. I know that Dr. Sears, when he was looking at those numbers before, didn't see any cause to celebrate. I do think we should highlight though, that we didn't lose ground. I have colleagues all throughout Virginia that I talk to. Hanover has similar demographics to Alamo County Schools. In 2021, they were 94% white. Now they're 96% white. They're, they are losing, and they're losing to school systems like ours because we are tracking. And it's, one of the things I like to say is that slow change is not no change. And again, if this had been a point of emphasis, if we had targets that we were working with 10 years ago, 15 years ago, small growth, a little bit at a time, accumulates over time. And we're doing legacy work right now. We're not going to, you're not, the, the school board is not at any time going to open up one of these reports and see a 10% jump in any particular category. And the applicants aren't applying somewhere else. I think if you go back to some of the slides that you saw earlier, there are no applicants. When, again, we don't have this perspective, not everybody talks to other superintendents in our region or around Virginia, but there are school systems that started school this year with 12% vacancies among teachers. They just simply started with no teacher. They, they would use, they're using auditoriums for classroom spaces. So I guess I'm jumping in here at the end because I felt a lot of negativity around people that, if you knew the Herculean efforts that they go through to not, to bring in any candidate, let alone trying to bring in a diverse candidate to work in the school system. The stories that I know of calling the same person repeatedly about, you know, are you still interested in Albemarle? Can I get you to apply for this job? Can I get you to apply for this job? When Dr. Sears applied initially to work in Alamo County Schools, he applied for two principals' jobs. And, you know, we made our way through this process, processes, but early on, I recognized that he had worked in Petersburg as their Director of Human Resources for five years. And so I, I said to my staff, I want, I want him in HR. We need someone like him that's had principal experience, who's had a background in working in HR, a background in working in the central office. So we, we go out of our way to not just leave it at who applies, oh, we didn't get the people we want. I think that if any, any board members would be welcome to shadow John McQuilkin or any of the other recruitment specialists that work in that department. And again, I don't, you guys were doing something, but ADP, payroll, starting a new HR department, Kronos, any one of those things would have shut down the departments in, in other places. But they did all, they've been doing all those things and they still started out the year with a 2% vacancy rate. So I know we don't applaud people, I'm not going to applaud you, but I want you to know that I'm blown away by what you've been able to accomplish as we started this school year. And we wouldn't exist as a school system without the employees that you've brought on board. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas.
Just to add a tiny bit, I mean, I think you're doing a great job and I think that the fact that we have HR in-house, we're actually going to get some of these questions answered and we're going to know what's, you know, what we should be doing. And, and I think that's an enormous benefit. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Kaiser, Mr. Redding, Dr. Sears, and Dr. Lynn for that report. Now moving to compensation study report led by Mr. Redding again.
All right. Good evening again, board members and Dr. Haas and everyone. We're bringing you tonight the 2022 Compensation Study. To provide a little bit of the background related to this, I want to give a refresher of how we got here. In the spring, we, as we prepared to establish our separate HR department that would serve only the school division, the board set aside funds for a compensation study to review our strategy and our practices as we separated out our practices from those of the government. All of our work is aligned with the strategic plan of the school division now, specifically the vision and the mission, as well as the values and goals. But most specifically, this report really emphasizes the work of Goal Three, equitable and transform, equitable and transformative resources, attracting, developing, and retaining the highest quality staff. Indeed, Strategy One calls out a compensation structure that makes us highly competitive compared to other employers. So aligning our compensation practices with the market study will ensure that we're achieving the success measures outlined in the strategic plan. And you see those And you see those big ones highlighted here, especially in future exit surveys, that salary will not be identified as a reason for departure. So, an overview of our agenda for the evening. We'll talk a little bit more about the purpose and set the stage here, and we'll talk about actions we've taken to date. We have our Segal consultant here to share a lot of data and information and some amazing graphs and tables that we'll walk through and interpret. And then we're going to talk about some actions that may come out of or may be recommended based on that data. We're going to foreshadow the fiscal year '24 budget implications, and then talk about next steps. So, back in the spring, this money was set aside, and the board retired the policy on commonality in human resources practices with local government. That was huge as we separated our HR departments. They had a structure that works very well for a local government entity and employer. This study allows us to focus on a school division employer. During the hiring update, we spoke about shifts in the labor market and the environment that we're currently working in. A major, major goal of this study was to clarify our competitive market, moving away from looking at our immediate neighbors and comparing ourselves only to them, to look at a variety of factors by which we can compare ourselves to other school divisions in Virginia to determine those we really should be seeing as our competitors for educators, although we're still also competing with some of our neighbors. So, at this point, I'd like to introduce Ms. Marian Oias. She's a Senior Consultant and Engagement Leader with Segal Companies, and she is going to walk us through some of the data in the reports that you received as part of the agenda.
Thank you.
To advance congestions.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Marian Oias, and I am from Segal Companies. I am coming up from our Raleigh office and spend a lot of time doing work in Virginia and have a rising, I guess you would call her preschooler, granddaughter Ivy June, who will be entering the school system here in just about a year and a half. In listening to some of the challenges you're experiencing from a recruitment and retention environment, I do have to reflect quickly on my first presentation to a school board in a study like this in 1993 in Madison, Wisconsin. And so my career has really been oriented toward working with organizations that use public funds to achieve objectives and a lot of work in schools, public schools, community colleges, and so forth. And on all those years, I have never seen a set of circumstances faced by public schools from a human resources perspective as I see today. These are unprecedented times. It really is Segal's honor to partner with you, to provide you some data and information to help drive some difficult decisions that you're faced with. In that vein, there's a few things that we'd like to discuss with you tonight, remind you or set expectations for the goals and scope of the study we endeavor to complete. We'll talk in some detail about the new competitive market or comparison market that's being used to look at the competitiveness of your pay and benefits. And then in terms of findings, we're separating them in sort of two categories, the good news, the bright spots, and then on the other side, areas for greater focus, where there are issues with your ability presently to compete in the market. The total compensation assessment results, the study itself is over 160 pages, incredibly detailed, but there is sort of bottom line findings we'd like to emphasize tonight, and then talk about our next steps in terms of Segal's work with you. So in determining your ability to be competitive, to bring in and keep talent, employees, staff, we looked at a number of categories that are key to the operations of a school division, and the report has sections specifically for teachers, other licensed professionals, and so on. So the results are mixed, depending on the job family and the level of job, your ability to compete presently, it varies, and so we'll talk about that. The scope of the study included what we call a view of total compensation, pay, and some of the key benefit programs, health benefits, retirement, paid time off, all aspects of the compensation package that is, is so key to hiring and retaining staff. We collected the data through a custom survey of the chosen peers, and we'll talk about the chosen peers in just a moment, and then supplemented the survey with a lot of interaction with other HR directors from the peer organizations, reading job descriptions to see if their psychologist was really comparable to yours, and so forth and so on, looking at their pay scales, their pay policies. So an incredible amount of data to make sure that our results were valid, to come back to you and say, here's the picture of your competitiveness. The final report was just issued in October. The work, the data were really collected during the, the spring and summer of this year. So as we think about your competitive market, the organizations with whom you compete, a realistic or practical definition is to think of it this way. What organizations are you hiring people from? What organizations, what other divisions, what other types of employers are you losing people to? We also ask you to think about what we call an aspirational market. Those are the divisions and organizations that you aspire to be more like. We find that most of our employers have sort of a set of, these are the people we compete with, but we'd really like to be more like XYZ. That's an aspirational market. Sometimes you find you need to pay higher. Not always, though. It just depends on the nature of that market. For more entry-level jobs, it's, it's generally true that your market is going to be more local. For jobs that are mid to senior in career, managers, directors, and so forth, the market generally is broader. People are more willing to pick up and relocate for medium or mid-level or higher level paid jobs. That's, those are just kind of basic labor economics. So these are some general principles. Now, in terms of actually saying, you know, for the first time, at least in many years, Alamo Public Schools is defining its own market, separate from the county, this provided an opportunity to really look specifically at your needs and your market. There was a number, there were a number of criteria that we used in this study that are fairly typical to use in studies such as this, to determine comparable school divisions. And so, on the, on the slide, you see a number of them, you know, proximity, again, especially location for jobs that, that folks are willing to, you know, how far are willing, people willing to commute generally? An hour, you know, for most jobs. Beyond an hour, we find that it's typically less critical for jobs where you're defining a local market. We looked at cost of living, cost of labor, and then a number of criteria or indices. We have the years of the data that we pulled to get the most current data, things such as expenditures per pupil, percent of teachers with masters, masters or doctorate, AP course enrollment percentages, et cetera. So those criteria were developed with Segal and our project team here, and then we, we set a range for each of those criteria of comparability. And so any division within Virginia that fell within the range of at least three of those criteria became identified as your initial comparable group. So out of 108 or so Virginia school divisions, looking at this criteria, we came up with our first set of school divisions. So again, they met comparability on at least three of those criteria. And you know that they are in different parts of the state, certainly some are closer than others, and none of them are exact matches to you, obviously. The only division that would match you would be you. So the idea is what, what are reasonable comparisons, right? What makes sense from a recruitment standpoint? The slide to the left says five, and that's an error, I apologize. We actually then brought in eight additional school divisions that maybe didn't fall within that range of all of those criteria, but from a common sense standpoint, and from talking to your HR team as to where you actually were recruiting, it made sense to bring in Augusta County, Chesterfield, and so forth. And some of the key, key criteria we looked at for comparability are listed there. Again, proximity, certain characteristics of the community that are comparable, and so forth. So in the end, we had 15 comparable peers, comparable peers that were used for the market analysis. Now you don't just compete with other school divisions. You've got such a wide variety of employees in a school division. You also compete with other local government, public sector organizations. So we certainly wanted to bring in pay data from the county, City of Charlottesville, and University of Virginia, UVA. You also compete maybe increasingly compared to years ago for some of your occupations in the private sector. And so, our methodology there, if we were to contact three or four or 10 private sector firms in the area or the region and ask to provide, if they would provide their pay data, they would basically say, no, why should we? We don't have to. So the methodology is, is that we purchase, as Segal, as a firm, a number of published surveys, a large, highly respected, high reputation survey organizations, and bring in data from those for jobs in which you are competing in the private sector. And as I said, there's a number of them. So Bureau of Labor Statistics, comp analysts through salary.com, and ERI are the three major surveys that we used to have a really full, robust view of your market from both the public sector, school division, and private sector, all bases. We do some adjustments to the data. This is basic, sound compensation methodology. One of the adjustments we always mention is our geographic adjustments. So if you think, for example, about those other school divisions, there's differences between you and them in terms of cost of living and also cost of labor. And we could look at either to try to do an apples-to-apples comparison. This, in the compensation world and salary setting, we don't focus so much on cost of living, because cost of living is really about demand and supply for goods and services. But it's cost of labor that we look at to, for our comparability. And so we find that some of the divisions, the cost of labor is much higher, some it's much lower, some it's pretty close to yours. So we discuss in the report that we adjust the salary data coming in from the other divisions to equalize to your particular cost of labor. And then a couple examples on the slide are Alexandria and Montgomery, which between them have very different cost of labor, and so there's an equalization that we do to bring the data to be comparable to your particular cost of labor. In terms of findings, there were, of course, so many, this was, oops, what did I do, Dan? I went, okay. Such a broad study, but we wanted to bring forward first some bright spots and good news. It's certainly important to share that. In terms of teacher starting salaries, you're the highest among the surveyed school divisions. So you're, you're comparable really and competitive throughout the scale for all the lanes, bachelors, masters, et cetera. But about mid-career, you know, step five, six, you start to lose some competitiveness. And we think the reason is, is because your step increases are 1.2% per year, and the average in that market of 15 is 1.4. So what happens is over time, you, you start to lose your competitive edge, and I'll show you a chart about that in a minute. Another, another good news is that your pay rates for what we call the other licensed professionals, social workers, psychologists, et cetera, have competitive starting rates. That's important. Your pay rates for school nurses, for at least the LPN licensed practical nurse level is very competitive. Daily pay rates for substitute teachers, I mean, these are all key jobs here, right? For short and long-term substitutes are competitive. The salary ranges for your school administrators are generally competitive. And teaching assistants, key categories here, especially at the entry rates, are very competitive in the market, your newly defined market at this point in time. Teachers' starting rates, the slide shows that there you are in terms of, this is in order of starting rates, lowest to highest, you're all the way to the right. Charlottesville is, we, we color-coded them a little differently because they're right in your backyard, so to speak. Your position is the same in terms of being the highest for the, for the different lanes. We showed the bachelors and the masters. Now this slide sort of shows what I was talking about, where if you look at, to the left, the starting salaries, your competitive advantage is obvious, but you see those pay lines start to come closer together as you go up the number of years of service or number of steps. So for mid to more senior level teachers, your competitive edge is starting to weaken, but you are, overall, you are still competitive. You cannot say that, we cannot say that you're not. This is just showing, again, in terms of a chart, the competitiveness of the pay for the other licensed professionals at the starting. But if you look to the high end, your maximum rates for those professionals, there's a lag in the market, anywhere between 7 to 16% below market. And why do we care about the maximum rates for jobs? Why is that important? One way to look at it is that over the years that the professional or any person is with you, you're investing, it's, folks, people are investments, right? Years, you know, over, over the years, you're investing a lot of time and dollars, and so are they. And certainly, you, you hate to think of losing an investment after many years because of pay becoming less than competitive. So we always pay attention, not just to starting rates, but how, what's the competitive picture for job, for the high end of the scales? This chart is, at the top, it should be labeled licensed practical nurse, those, the first two lines. And so you can see your ranges are very competitive at the start and at the end. You can see, though, now, if you look at the RNs, the registered nurse at the bottom, you've got an issue with your pay being definitely below market there, and Dan is going to talk to you more about that in a few minutes. This is showing you again stacking up the rates for substitute teachers, the daily pay rates. Alamo is way to the right, and of course Charlottesville is sort of right there with you. I bet that's not a surprise to you. For teaching assistants, we show, again, a very competitive situation. What, what is showing there, and is, is not labeled well, is you've got three classification titles of teaching assistants, and those are represented there. So again, good news. Now, with facilities, we start to look at some jobs here where there are some areas of focus, opportunities for improvement. In the custodial group, for example, your, your pay for custodians and leads are consistent or competitive in the market, but we see that in the supervisor group, there's, there's an issue where the pay is not as competitive as it is for the line staff. So you want pay for supervisors to be competitive, not just for external applicants, but for internal applicants, so that there's a reason to be promoted, you know? Most people are at least some degree motivated by pay. So supervisory pay is always important to look at. In the food and nutrition group, the pay for your food service associates is, is very competitive, but once again, the manager pay lags the market, particularly as we look at the private sector, and you know that you compete with the private sector for your food and nutrition jobs, and your custodians, and your facilities, and so forth. So there's a theme here, the breadth of your, of your market. A little bit more about areas of opportunity. Now, these are the areas where there are some issues in the market. We talked about registered nurses, absolutely. We talked about those maximum or higher rates for your other licensed professionals. We mentioned that the pay for the school administrators is generally competitive, but the rates for the elementary assistant principals and the high school principals are somewhat less competitive than the others, sort of ranking 10th and 8th among the school divisions. And since Alamo, you know, ranks one, two, and three, and so many other jobs, 10th and eight isn't the greatest result. Bus drivers. You can't pick up a paper, you can't turn on the radio and not hear a story about school divisions struggling to hire and keep bus drivers. It's a national dilemma for sure. In your market, your starting pay at this point for bus drivers lags the market by about 9% or $1.50 per hour. $1.50 may not sound like much, but a 9% lag in the market is huge in this labor market at this time. It's just not. It's just not sustainable, ranking 12th among the 15 school divisions. So there's other things that divisions are doing, and I know Dan is going to also talk to you about a, sort of a case study on bus drivers in a few minutes. We looked at all of your other hourly jobs, about 30 of them, found seven jobs that we think are problematic. And you notice many of them are, are in your maintenance and labor trades jobs. This is also an issue Segal finds all over the East Coast, Southeast, and really nationally in terms of being able to compete for skilled and licensed carpenters, electricians, foremen or forepersons, maintenance mechanics. In the office support role, there are a couple of jobs where you're lagging the market substantially, executive assistant and area transportation supervisor. I mentioned the food service manager before. We looked at any number, about 40 salary professional and managerial positions as well, and found six jobs where the pay ranges lead the markets, excuse me, lag the market substantially. Several of those are in IT, which in today's highly technical world, in a world of significant cybersecurity challenges facing the public sector, this is probably not a great position to be in. So we would have you look at web programmer analyst, technology support manager, assistant director of enterprise operations, manager and assistant director of infrastructure and support. And then also, it's not an IT job, but your fleet operations manager is a critical job, of course, in your fleet operations area. This chart just shows you quickly, pictorially, the registered nurse situation, where Albemarle, for so many of those other charts, was way over to the right. For this one, you're kind of way over to the left, and Charlottesville is above you in that regard. This is a chart showing you quickly the starting pay for the bus drivers, what it looks like. And we talked about that. Dan will talk more about that in a minute. And then there are some other jobs that we just listed as being below market that are on these next charts and graphs. Auto equipment mechanic, parts and services supervisor, area supervisor. Notice a lot of these charts talk about being below market at the midpoint. The midpoint in a salary range is the middle value. We looked at if you were below the market for the entry, the midpoint, and the maximum. But we're giving you the midpoints here. When we work with you on developing new salary structures, we sort of focus on making sure those midpoints are competitive, and then we develop starting rates and maximum rates that are competitive as well. In facilities and maintenance, here are some of the jobs mentioned before, some of the skilled trades, where the mark, the market is definitely gaining ground over you, in some cases, such as carpenter, quite significantly. General foreman, HVAC mechanic, and again, we see this as an issue in many of our clients, public, private sector, it doesn't matter, it's, it's just the state of the labor economy right now. Here are the office support positions. There's a variation here between about 5% below market, up to 10, 9, 26%. So again, there's a variety there. Here are the IT positions. I think there's a couple slides of these. Again, just sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words, jobs where there is quite a variation or a lag between your pay ranges and the market at this time. Now, in terms of the employee benefits picture, the total compensation I mentioned, there are just a few areas that we would, would say you might want to focus a bit on. Paid leave for 10-month employees is lower than most of your peers. Your personal days program or accrual rate is two days versus three to five, which is kind of the average. A trend Segal is seeing is that employers are moving more toward kind of freedom of choice in the benefits world, so they're adding more floating holidays, personal days, as opposed to regimented, you must take these designated holidays off. Paid leave offerings for 12-month employees is also less generous here than the study average, ranging from one to five days per year, depending on the year of service you're talking about. All the details are in the report. Health benefits are an expensive benefit for any employer. We're talking about medical and dental plans generally. The, the type of plans you have, we found pretty similar to those offered by the other school divisions. But your costs and the cost-sharing arrangements you have with the employees are notably more favorable here than the other divisions. A couple specific results. Your employees pay anywhere between $1,300 to $3,600 less per year out of their pocket for family coverage than the peer divisions. That's a lot of money, depending on the plan chosen. Now, from your pocketbook standpoint, your costs are also lower than the survey average by between $1,000 to $2,300, again, depending on the type of plan and the coverage tier. Type of plan means whether you're talking about the high deductible plan versus the PPO, and coverage tier is if you're talking about employee-only coverage, employee plus spouse, family, that's what's referred to as tier, coverage tier. Our division of Segal are not benefits experts, although we have a benefits expert division. But we know enough to know that one potential explanation for your costs being lower is differences in what we call plan design. So we did take a look at the deductibles and the out-of-pocket expenses incurred by your employees throughout the year. And we did find that your medical plans do have higher annual deductibles than many of the other divisions. That may be explained why the premiums are lower. There are many factors, though, we mentioned, that can influence plan costs, the size and composition of the population, the funding, the provider networks available. It's a complicated picture. But this difference in cost was definitely notable. Retirement benefits, there's just not a lot to say here. You're pretty consistent with the other Virginia school divisions because nearly all of them participate in VRS, and nearly all of them, like you, offer a non-contributory, meaning you're not contribute money, money as an employee, employer, savings plan. So there's just not a lot of variation. Bottom line, in our view, in our professional opinion, the school, Albemarle County Public Schools does offer market-competitive pay and benefits. And we believe, in general, you're well-positioned to continue to recruit and retain highly qualified and talented educators, administrators, and staff. There are opportunities, as we discussed, though, so I don't want to paint a completely rosy picture. We do suggest you consider those jobs where the difference between your pay and the market is substantial. We do think in terms of the benefits area, there are a couple things you might want to consider offering if you want to be what we call an employer of choice. And that's what I heard a lot of tonight, you know? You're really, you're trying to attract the best and the brightest and a diverse group and all of those wonderful things. And that's, that's consistent with our, our term employer of choice. And that means that you have to pay competitively, and the benefits need to be pretty darn good, too. So in that regard, you might want to consider a bit of additional paid time off for 10-month and 12-month employees. You might also want to look at paid family leave, paid family leave. Now, notice that we said that that isn't currently offered at any of the divisions. But we can tell you from our practice across the country that if, if anyone asks Segal, what's going on in the benefits world? The biggest trend we're seeing is the start of paid family leave. It's a huge trend. It's responding to a social zeitgeist, if you will, about the importance of paid family leave. It's, it's really key in the benefits world, and I don't think it's going to go away. Now, that's just, that's just our view. So it's something that you might want to consider, again, if you're wanting to be that employer of choice. You might want to talk to your benefits broker about your deductibles. It may not be possible to lower them without having to increase your premium substantially. I would take a look at it if I were you. And then consider possible employer contributions to your supplemental retirement plan. The next slide is our, Segal's rewards of work model. And the only reason I flash this up here is because there are so many other aspects of work that people find rewarding or not rewarding. Pay, I've been working in pay for over 30 years. I'm not going to tell you that pay and benefits aren't important. But we must, as any employer, look at these other areas, affiliation, the culture, the profession, professionalism, possibilities. And in hearing you talk about your Gallup Engagement Survey and your, your desire to do better exit interviews and stay interviews, you're looking at those other things, and we commend that. That is wise, for sure. Segal's next steps to conclude, with the project team that we are very much enjoying working with, we'll continue to work with them to create both teachers and classified pay structure recommendations. That's in process. Our analytics team is crunching the numbers now. And then provide cost plan estimates for three scenarios aligned with your compensation objectives. And, and those are to the right. Generally, there's really two things we want to make sure happen, that the pay is based both on market, you know, competitiveness, but also aligns with your internal value work. You do job evaluation, you rank jobs in terms of difficulty and complexity. We have to make sure that the pay ranges take care of and are respectful of both elements of value. The other thing is that as we come back and bring cost estimates for implementation, the expenses have to be manageable. Every client we have has a budget, and it's, it's usually a fixed amount. So how do we spend that money in a way that is the most equitable? Equitable doesn't mean everybody gets the same pay increase, but it means that the principles we use to make the recommendations are the same for everybody. The underlying principles, if you will, are applied equitably to, to every individual in the plan. So we will come back, then, with per-employee implementation recommendations, very specific in documents, to assist you in transitioning to new pay schedules on whatever the planned implementation date. And we're talking with Dan and the team about at what point do you want us to come back, and we'll be ready when you're ready. Thank you.
So this is a good place for us to pause. If there are questions or clarifying questions, you saw a lot of data. What's coming up next are some of the next steps, but if we can clarify anything, we'd like to do that. Trying to use my wait time from many years ago when I was a teacher.
We figure you're going to cover it in next steps.
You dare, coming quickly.
I think there's a question back here, is that?
Board. Yeah. All right. We'll go ahead and talk about going forward. So for immediate action, we, we reviewed a lot of data. There's a lot of good news about the efforts that the board put into compensation over the last year and a half. We're competing well for many of the positions in our division. But we just saw areas where we want to take action and improve our market position. The board reserved $3 million in this year's budget for compensation adjustments during this fiscal year. As we consider priorities, here are some factors we believe will guide that work. They include the percentage that a position might be below market, how much, how far below market, whether there are vacancies in the position, and what our fill rate, and how long it takes to fill the position, and the associated costs, and how that fits into what is budgeted during this year. Additionally, the state allocated a one-time, allocated funding for a one-time bonus for some employees, and we want to add funds to provide that bonus for all employees. So this, these factors will help us guide our compensation strategy moving forward. We do, excuse me, we do want to look at two case studies for consideration. One case study would be bus drivers. On this slide, you can see our starting pay rate, and that, in that new market, that puts us in 12th place. We currently have 117 incumbent bus drivers, and we have 32 vacancies. In the Segal report, that showed the starting salary at market at $18.02 an hour. So an annual cost to raise our bus drivers to that market, and this includes benefits, the employer share of taxes, all the other expenses, would be a little more than $450,000. It's important to note that over the last week, we heard that the city of Charlottesville has proposed raising driver pay, starting pay, to $21 an hour. In order for us to match that for our drivers, and this is just for our drivers, not for some of the other transportation positions, that'll require some further analysis and work. But that will cost, the total cost would be just over $1 million, and that's spread over the year. So that has to be factored to when during this year we would implement such a change. Another case study would be school nurses. Starting rates for where we start, Licensed Practical Nurse and a Registered Nurse. You can see where we rank. You saw that in the graphs for both 14th place out of that market, close to the bottom for an RN. Of our current school nurses, eight carry the Licensed Practical Nurse designation, 18 are Registered Nurses. We have two current vacant positions. The starting salary at market in the report for a Licensed Practical Nurse, $20.43 an hour. You saw in that, for the LPNs, we are within market. For the Registered Nurse, though, we are significantly below. And the estimated cost on an annualized basis, again, including benefits, employer share of taxes, just under $300,000. Some other positions that we heard about, this is not an exhaustive list. There are many more to look at. But our electricians, we have two incumbents and two vacant positions. We saw them 21% below market. So you can see costs, again, annualized, including the benefits. General foreman includes the carpenter, our HVAC positions. That is one that takes us a long time to fill when it's vacant. And then some of those positions in the Department of Technology are ranging from 5% to 13% below So on November 10th, we'll come back. We want to provide this information for your consideration and your reflection. Our next step is to work with some employee groups, get some feedback. There is a lot of data to digest in there. But when we come back in November, we will be ready to ask the board or recommend action to the board to take related to immediate adjustments. After that, we're going to be heading into fiscal year 2024 budget development. So we will focus closely on the compensation-related part of that. I believe Mizoya shared that Segal's providing cost estimates related to some of those market strategies, and that's going to be based on the position we want to take in the market. Where do we, where do we see ourselves within that new adjusted market? And then any other structural changes to our pay scales. We'll bring you data related to those potential changes, and also budget initiatives related to recruiting and retention for positions that are hard for us to fill. And you can see our definition up there, related to the number of applicants we're seeing, time to fill, and some of the trends out there. And with that, we open it for questions and discussion.
Hey, Dan, can I ask you just a quick question for clarification? So if you go back to the bus drivers, so basically, just to clarify for me, because I sometimes don't understand, but, so basically, the estimated cost to match Charlottesville, the annual cost is $1 million. So that means that, like, if it started the beginning of November, you would take 20% off of that, because it's two months out of the year already gone?
Right. It would be whatever percentage of the school year has passed, we would remove from that.
Okay. So really, it's more in the ballpark of 800K for this year? And the reason you're providing annualized cost is because this, the money we would be using to do this is money from FY '22 savings, so therefore, the board will have to build in the annual cost in their FY '24 budget moving forward. So it's one point of data to say, if you, if you do the pay increase for this year, you're going to need to build a million in going into next year's budget. But for this current year, the one-time money that we have set aside, it would be about 80% of this if it started at the beginning of November.
That, that is correct. So that, that would be an ongoing annual budget cost that has to be planned for, but it's going to be prorated based on when in the year it's implemented.
And Dan, this is assuming full employment, so this would cover the, actually recruiting with 32.
with 32 open spots for bus drivers?
I think it's based on the current.
I believe this is covering the 117 incumbents.
Right. But if, but if we recruit 32 more people?
That, that cost will be adjusted.
Yeah. Okay. I'd like to see that number next time.
When is Charlottesville's proposed starting pay rate? Or I mean, when are they going to take action on that, do you know?
Don't have that date. We can get to you. I believe I've seen the article. I would need to get back to you on when it's going into effect.
Thank you.
Is there a reason that we would need to wait till November 1st to, or November 10th to do anything?
November 10th gives us time to gather some of that feedback and be able to share it.
What feedback are we looking for? This was pretty scary.
I mean, our intent was to move forward and share with employee groups, but I would defer to the board as to the timeline for action.
Dan, are we primarily looking at starting salaries because we have, you know, some of our, our pay grades that, or pay ranges that are low on the high end as well? Is there any thought in?
That's a great.
Pretty much expanding it across the different levels?
That's a great question. I'm actually trying to get to, this chart is maybe one of the better examples of how the compensation study really is comparing at entry level, midpoint, and maximum. So three different points in the pay range for each job. So you see the full range up here. This is for the other licensed professionals, but we, we look at those three data points. The minimum, that midpoint of the salary range, and the maximum. And that's what those percentage differences are based on.
I think that it was said earlier that we were at 1.2% in some categories, right around the five-year point where the, the, the numbers for raises were 1.4. I, I thought about three or four years ago, we changed the pay scale so it was basically an upward-moving line so that everybody who, if there was a 4% increase, everybody within that, whether it's teachers or staff, got the 4%. So it's kind of a straight line. Is, is what could cause what Mizoyas was talking about to have that difference in that we might not have been giving as high a pay increase? And that would cause us to fall behind?
Yes. So if their steps have that, even that incremental difference, and you can see in this chart, the dotted line, that each step is slightly larger than our steps. So you see where it crosses and we never cross back over it. Their steps do pass us at a point in both, or in all of bachelor's, master's, and doctoral lengths.
So it's, yeah, so it's two things. One is, so we did straighten out the scale so that when we did pay increases, we were using four anchor points and we went to two. And what you said is accurate, Mr. Alcaro, that what we did was straighten it out so that when a teacher, regardless of where they were on that scale, would get the same raise. Because the way it was being applied was, it was market, looking at the, where we stood in the market on each one of those anchor points and said, oh, well, we're, we said 4% overall, but you're going to get 1% because in your market at 10 years' experience, you're not that far off the market. So we straightened that out so everybody's the same. And then the other piece that is causing this gap is that there's a, there's a step factored, factored in for each year of employment that, that goes into the pay increase for a teacher. And we use 1.2% difference for each year, and apparently Charlottesville uses 1.4%. So as, as Dan said, as you go along, it stretches and stretches until you see the gap develop, and that's where they're getting ahead of us. So like a strategy could be saying, well, we're going to go to 1.4 in between our, our steps, and then you figure out the cost of that. And then this is an assumption I have, which is that if, to say it would cost a million dollars coming back to the bus drivers, that takes, does that take into account the adjustments up to deal with compression or is that just starting pay? So that's just starting. I'm looking at Roslin.
No, that, that's based on their current pay. So we actually calculated that. We put a formula into effect to calculate for those 117 incumbents.
Okay. So that's why it's the, the price tag that it is then. So it does factor in all the employees that are currently employed. Their, their pay will also go up in addition to the starting pay.
Correct. Yes.
And that's not to, is that to adjust for compression then? Is that, that's what's happening?
That would prevent compression among bus drivers. However, it's important to note that the study found other positions in transportation that we then have to go back and look at.
Okay.
I have a few comments as well. One, I want to commend Segal for doing the compensation study. I will own that I was one of the ones who was upset that we were doing another compensation study because I've seen us go through a few iterations. I appreciated that. This included a market basket that had aspirational comparable, including geographically close ones that we're actually competing with in public sector. So it was kind of nice to have all of that in one study. So I wanted to say thank you for that. So my big one is kind of just the process moving forward. Timing for the bus drivers, that's a critical shortage that's affecting our students today. And so when we say we're coming back November 10th with recommendations, I guess I'm just, I'm curious. So like what, what's going to be included in the recommendations? Is it going to include the non-monetary, what did you call them? Work, rewards of work model, like paid family leave? Is it going to include that kind of stuff? Is it going to be concrete, like we need to give our bus drivers this amount of raise? And then I second Ellen's statement, which is, I feel like the bus drivers, which we know our kids are not getting adequate bus service right now, and we need to make a change there. I feel like that could happen sooner, like today.
Yeah. So I know Dan wasn't saying it, but the short answer is that you, it's just our board's protocol to receive information and next time vote, but there's nothing keeping you.
And there's nothing stopping that. And I take pause though, because we are receiving this for information, but the way it's kind of being read is it's information, and then November 10th is going to be more information about what recommendations to do, which then we're going to process and decide. So I guess I would just be curious how the board is feeling about bus drivers in particular, and where do we go with those? And then I, I, this is on the rewards for, of work model. I am interested in recommendations on that because I feel like that's something that in the past, I personally have struggled with some of our decision-making. Like when we shortened our school year to boost teacher morale in the short term, I feel like that is a declining return in terms of teacher satisfaction that could have been better repeated by offering them more personal leave days. So that they just know that now I get five personal leave days, I can take the time as I see fit versus something that you kind of forget and then it becomes just baked in. Okay, it's a shorter school year. I don't think that's why they're making a decision where to work. So I'm very curious about those kind of non-monetary pieces that can improve worker morale. Personal leave being a big one that I personally am interested in. And then bus drivers and, and are critical shortages. And Mr. Floyd, I see you. I know nurses are important too, and I do anticipate having those discussions as well. But in that, I just, some of them seem, the bus driver seems like it needs to be now.
So in terms of a lot of what you discussed related to the rewards of work model, a little bit later tonight, you're going to hear about the Employee Voice and Action Committee, which is one of the ways that we can bring a lot of that related to affiliation, culture, professions, all of those domains within the rewards of work forward. We're also, as we've brought on board the program manager for retention and DEI, that is going to be a good bit of her work too, as she's working with focus groups of employees around both what they love about their job and what they're struggling with, or what are barriers for them, and how we systematically start addressing what we're hearing from our employees. So I think those leverage a lot of what's in there around the organizational culture pieces of the rewards of work.
So what do you anticipate we could do about our bus drivers in a more expedient fashion?
Certainly defer, but the board can act.
Maybe you should make a motion, Katrina.
Okay. Before there is a motion. Are you saying, this is a rounded off figure, 800,000 would take us through this year, bringing them up to where we think Charlottesville is going to be, right? And 1 million would be taking them over, what time span compared to that?
Well, what you'd be doing is committing to $1 million in your operating budget for fiscal year '24.
And we'd be using our 3 million set aside to get us through the, this current year. School year.
That's right. And so you, it's, so you've got three, you've got $3 million you set aside to do a $1,000 one-time bonus that's partially funded from Virginia will cost about a million and a So that's, to do that.
Okay, I think the other, are you from Segal too?
No. You want to hear me talk?
No, no.
No, oh, okay.
Please make a motion. Our kids are getting to school on time.
Oh, oh, okay.
Can we have comments from all of the school board members before we get there?
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to start off?
No, Jono was next. No.
This is, this is actually quite a surprise in terms of, of acting on it tonight. I understand the needs of students. I also understand that the sooner we get money, the sooner we can hopefully hire, hopefully hire people. And the training is going to take three months, you know, somewhere in that, in that two to three months for the new drivers. So this would be impacting probably January. And so.
Make a motion.
I think that I would be more inclined to do what we call two-by-twos and get a little bit more information about it so that we could act on it in two weeks at the beginning of our work session. And so that it's not, I'm, I'm not debating the numbers that are, are being put up here in the least, but I think that if, that we don't need a sudden move, if we could do something, as we know, called two-by-twos, and be prepared to come in and make a motion in the beginning of the meeting on the 27th, 27th, 27th. That would be my thought.
I had some clarified questions about the bus drivers, and this might be Roslin, an issue, a question for you. So we have, training is nearly complete for three new drivers. A new evening training class started with an additional four trainees. So does that count toward our vacancies or are we, are we still sitting at 32 after that?
I'm sorry.
Oh, Roslin.
Oh.
32 is, 32 is our current vacancies. They do not factor in current trainees. But I will just, while we are optimistic about our training class, just one example, we started with four, we're down to three. And so there's not, it's not, it's not the solution.
And also, as we've been following these transportation updates, are these, so training is nearly complete for three new drivers, are those the three of the four drivers who are going to start October 3rd from the past?
Previously going to stop October 3rd. I think the new one is October 21st, but that's the same four. It's down to three now.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Great. That data?
Well, I think even without a motion tonight, I mean, I think there's general agreement that we're going to do something to raise salaries. A. B, we certainly, whatever salary increase we decide upon can be made retroactively if we want to do that. I think conceptually, I mean, I'm not dodging the transportation. I'd be happy to vote on it next time, right at the beginning, but I, I think when we ask for the, the compensation report, we're looking at two items. We'll be looking, is this the correct market basket? And I think I'm much happier with this market basket. Thank you, Ms. Oz. And I, I think I feel better about this comparison group. The other element, though, that we're going to talk about was where do we want to be on the scale? Our old market basket, we agreed that we would peg our compensation at 75%, which I thought, why are we immediately giving ourselves a D? But I mean, I'm happy that many of the results showed our division being, you know, toward the top. So I think right now we're talking, we're not talking about what is the optimum salary. We're talking about how can we just get ahead of Charlottesville? And maybe that's right. Maybe that's at the top of the scale. But it seems to me we should at least, conceptually, what is our target in terms of the market basket? Because that's a two-piece dance that we've always done, right? And, you know, I like, I like the data that shows us at the top of money, but I don't like the data that shows us, you know, in the bottom on, you know, bus drivers and registered nurses and a lot of our, our trade professions. So I, I think it would be, if I thought that raising the salaries of bus drivers tonight would solve the bus driving problem, you know, I, I would be 100% for that. But how much should we raise it? And we could, I mean, just, he is discussing the meeting.
Please refrain from making comments.
Or he will be escorted from the meeting. But so, so that's just my two cents. Just conceptually, how we got here and where do we want to be instead of rushing to stop gap things.
Well, it seems to me, it seems to me that we knew that we had some deficiencies, which is why we had the set aside. Now that we have identified the deficiencies, this one is really glaring. And I know there are others as well, and all of our employees are valuable, but we've been hit really hard with the bus driver thing, which is why I was just thinking we could go ahead and prioritize this one and then work out the others.
I would just, I would want to add on as well. Kate, I think I'm just on the other side of the coin. I also, conceptually, am struggling because I don't think that we're rushing into this decision. I'm actually kind of a little bit confused by the process because I feel like we identified a shortage, our need. We implemented a study. We're here today getting information that's highlighting that it's a continued need. I did not see a concrete recommendation in regards to that, but that is an outstanding question I have, is when we come back in a month, it's a given, as we all said, that we plan on increasing the salaries. I'm assuming it's going to be part of the recommendation. And I guess I'm just curious why this, what, what is the benefit awaiting? Because I do think it will make a benefit, there will be a benefit, because whoever is applying for a bus driver, to be a bus driver right now, is going to be applying in Charlottesville.
I'm always persuadable, Ms. Colson.
So if it's no, if we know that it's going to be part of the recommendation that we get in a month, if we know we want to approve the recommendation and boost their pay, we know it's a needed component of our operational, an operational need we have right now, and it would, it might not make a difference, but it certainly is better than doing nothing at this point because maybe we will get more applicants. Other than, I would appreciate if we could get, I'm presuming we know a general idea of what that recommendation's going to be. And if we could just get that right now for at least those ones. Mr. Floyd, I'm sorry that I'm looking at you because I know we've talked about nurses, but for the bus drivers, all the nurses here, but for the bus drivers, if we could act tonight, if we have the recommendation, I would like to do that.
Okay. Mr. Ober.
My concern is, is, you know, I, I hear that, Katrina, and I agree with you because this issue is not going to go away and it could get worse. But I also understand where Jono's coming from, but, you know, look, let's, let's see exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. I don't know that two weeks is going to make a substantive difference. And I hate the idea of building a plane while in flight, and that kind of feels like what we're doing. So I would, I would, I agree with Jono. I think we should have something on the calendar for, for two weeks from now that we can consider and vote on.
So move it up from November 10th. That was the current, we're, we're going to come back November 10th with recommendations.
I'm sorry, Katrina, I couldn't hear you.
I'm assuming, right?
So you were saying to have. So you were saying to have something on the docket related to this on October the 27th?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I will just go ahead and make a motion because transportation is near and dear to my heart, and I've seen so many parents and students struggling with it and teachers, and I feel like it trickles down and has an effect on literally our whole school system and how it operates. So I'll make a motion. If I lose, that's fine because someone who is on the winning side can just bring it up again in two weeks when we discuss it. But before I do that, do we have the recommendation of what we were gonna, what were you guys going to tell us about bus drivers? Do we want to match Charlottesville? I move that we match the salary of Charlottesville pending, now. Match the salary of Charlottesville bus drivers.
Second.
Katrina, I hate to be this way, but why would we match them and not exceed them by a small amount?
Price is right, baby. Plus one. No, that's a good question. Because I want to hear the recommendation. If we need to raise it a little bit more, we can. But at the very least, I want to know that when people are applying today, they feel adequate applying to either us or to Charlottesville. So that's what I would like to go with. And that's my motion.
Okay, it's been moved.
Your motion is to get a recommendation?
Nope. Motion is to match Charlottesville's bus driver salaries.
As proposed.
It's been moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Osborne, that we match Charlottesville's starting, or proposed bus drivers increase.
Twenty-one dollars per hour.
Yeah, twenty-one dollars per hour. You've heard the motion. We are ready for, is there any discussion on the motion? It is, again, that we'd be raising our salary to twenty-one dollars.
And that would be effective when, Katrina?
It's too big.
November 1.
Tomorrow.
I would yield to the recommendation of the Human Resources Department. I don't feel comfortable making a decision about how quickly they can implement a raise. I would just want it to be raised to twenty-one dollars per hour. This is, again, operating on the assumption that this is literally going to be the recommendation that you're going to propose in two weeks or four weeks. So I would rather do it now.
I, that's not what I'm hearing. I mean, I don't, I, maybe I'm missing that, but that's not what I'm hearing, that I don't have an anticipated recommendation at this time. I don't, maybe I've missed that.
Yeah, they didn't actually make a recommendation.
Another part of why I would rather do it as, as we normally do it when, when we have a new topic and we wait until the next meeting, because we also tend to get a lot of input by email and from constituents and other manners. And that's the reason that we really have always done it that way. And, you know, I'll, I'll vote no because of that. The odds are very high that I can vote high, vote yes in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, I, I will vote no if it's voted denied, but I fully anticipate in two weeks to look at it and to consider it. I would vote yes. I just, I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to do this recklessly. I want to do it, consider it the way we do it all the time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. And if there is no other discussion actually related to the actual motion, Ms. Thompson, could you please call the roll?
My apologies, Chair Graham. Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, it was moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Osborne.
Thank you. Dr. Acuff?
I would vote no.
We have children that aren't getting to school on time. Ms. Alcarro, Mr. Alcarro.
I understand your confusion, I mean, your thoughts, but please no comments from the public.
Mr. Alcarro?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
No.
Mr. Oberg?
No.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Chair Page?
Yes.
With a vote of four-three, the motion fails to carry.
Okay, so the motion does not care about a vote of four-three.
I would like to then, let the loser speak first. If we could officially move the recommendation up from November 10th to the next meeting, I would appreciate that.
Okay. So is that board consensus? That we would have the recommendation coming to us on October the 27th rather than November the 10th?
For action. Yeah.
For action?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, are there any other comments, questions? Was that the end of the presentation, Mr. Redding?
Yes, that was the end. We were on questions and discussion.
Okay. So any other questions?
I just have a question about when then will the recommendations for the other positions be made? Are we asking to move all of that up to the 27th? Or are we looking?
Yes.
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 All of it.
So double duty, Mr. Redding.
Fair enough.
It would be very nice to have the recommendation that we could take action sooner. I know we're, and I would like to ask my colleagues to think about, you know, where we want to be on that salary range, you know, as a general policy. I think we have a ways to go on some of them.
I'd like a little clarity to around the thousand dollar bonus. I always wonder when things, I just want to tie that to work and morale because when I hear there's such a, there's such a difference between salaries. So like, a thousand dollar bonus for a teaching assistant is much different than administrator, and I just want to make sure we're having the most impact possible with our bonus. And how, so if you could have some more clarity around that when we come back with recommendations.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to look at the numbers for that, too, for the purposes of the board because doing a thousand dollars for 2,600 people is 2.6 million dollars. Doing a million dollars for the bus drivers, and we're 600,000 dollars over the money that was set aside to make adjustments. And so, you know, we still need to talk nurses, we still need to talk a lot of other things. So, you know, I mean, how, no pressure here, Mr. Dan, you know, but a lot, we're going to need to find out a lot.
No pressure, but lots of pressure.
So I just want to point out that with that one thousand dollar bonus, some of that money is provided by the state, but the state is covering some positions, not all. So we would supplement it so that all positions are covered, those that are not included in the state's budget.
Great.
Okay, any other discussion on the compensation study? If not, we'll take a 10-minute break.
Oh, it is.
We do have materials and processes ready, so.
We will come back to order. Okay, our next item, the employee voice and decision making led by Dr. Kaiser.
I know you all are familiar with who we are, but for the public, I'll go ahead and reintroduce ourselves again. Good evening, board members. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Today, we are here with a member of our Employee Voice Steering Team to update the board on the process developed by the steering team to implement a committee that allows for employee voice in decision making. Our purpose tonight is really to update the board on the plan for implementation of what we are now calling the Employee Voice and Action Committee. Since the board's motion in May, a group of employees has worked to create a process to give staff a resonant voice in the operations of Albemarle County Public Schools. In August, we had two people come and present to you, Lori Beck and Derek Frazier. We have Mr. Frazier back with us tonight. He's a Spanish teacher at Monticello High School to update you on the current plan. Ms. Beck was hoping to be with us as well again, but she is unfortunately under the weather tonight. What Mr. Frazier is going to do is he's going to share with you the overarching proposal for a committee to allow for that voice. The board asks that we come back with a developed plan, and that's what we are hoping that you will hear. Our hope is that by the time that we get through this and answer any questions that you have, that you all will feel confident that we can go on and move forward and move from the steering team worked in the development to the beginning of the implementation. We do recognize that as we implement, what we have put forth in this plan is something that we feel is a good starting point. We also know that as you develop things and as you live things, there are always opportunities for entering for growth and improvement, but we do feel like we have a strong foundation at this point. With each of the steering team meetings, we have begun with a conversation around how the strategic plan is the umbrella for all of the work that we do, and that in the creation of the Employee Voice and Decision Making Team, that all of the work of that must align with the vision, mission, values, and goals of the school division. And we recognize that in order to meet the three strategic goals, that our workforce needs to have voice to ensure that they are able to perform at their best and in support of students. You have heard tonight about the challenges of hiring, and being able to retain our employees, also a key premise of Goal Three, to attract, develop, and retain the highest quality staff, begins with us hearing from our employees and working to make sure that Albemarle County Public Schools is the best possible workplace for them. Our steering team has worked over a number of months now to develop a plan that we feel is a strong first step in the implementation of the Employee Voice and Action Committee. Tonight, you will hear about some of the highlights of the plan, and I will be honest, this steering team really wrestled with many of the topics that you'll hear about, and while it may not yet be perfect, we do feel we are at the point where we can move forward and move from development into implementation. And with that, I am going to invite up Mr. Frazier to provide an overview.
Thank you, and hello again, and thank you to the members of the board for allowing me the opportunity to share with you the work of the steering team. I'm Derek Frazier, and I teach at Monticello High School. Since we last presented to you, the steering team has met three more times in an effort to finalize the process of taking the concept of the employee voice into an actionable plan. Sorry about that. In the past few weeks, we've collected data over the two Zoom meetings and conducted a survey of the members involved in the steering team, those who have participated in the process up to this point. With our conversations and data from the survey, we've come to several resolutions. As this employee group continues to roll on, it will operate under the direction of human resources. We think this will accomplish a few things. It will provide ownership for the employees. It honors the confidentiality that the team has insisted on. As the representatives will be selected from schools and departments, there will be a level of trust among the representatives and those they would represent. Ultimately, it would provide more flexibility for the evac team that will be necessary for it as we move forward. We intend to make the committee a group of diverse employees. This will be covering different and various roles and responsibilities among the departments and expertise. It will intend to be a group that is demographically representative of our staff as a whole. Additionally, the AEA will select two members to serve on the committee. And finally, it's important, we feel it's very important for the evac, we feel it's very important to the evac team that the school board be well informed on the team's work and progress. As such, up to two board members will be invited to attend the meetings. They will be attending, but not voting members. So in regards to the structure of the meetings, we saw it best for a few things. Monthly meetings and independent moderator to be hired. In between meetings, employees will submit agenda items to their representatives, but this process is still being discussed. The steering team was fairly aligned with what the agenda should and should not be. The list that you're looking at are samples of what the committee could discuss. These are countywide issues that affect the various schools and departments. These topics are not individual grievances nor school-specific issues. Rather, they're concerns for all the county. In other words, if an issue, if there is an issue that would require the attention of the superintendent or the school board, the committee would meet on it. If the issue would go to the school's admin, then it would not make it to the agenda. It's important for us to keep data and research in order for making decisions. Transparency is additionally important. We'll make every effort to capture and present the efforts of the evac team to all members of the ACPS community. With that in mind, a website will be developed and utilized to capture the evac minutes, outcomes, and other relevant information. So now I'm going to turn it back over to Dan Redding, who will provide more details pertaining to the website and our next steps, and then I'll be happy to take any questions that I can answer.
All right. So the transparency and the accountability are a theme throughout this. The communication with the school board and the board's awareness of the topics of discussion and the feedback provided by the members of the evac is key and critical. As we shared, two board members are invited to each meeting to be listening in and participate in the discussion. Meeting summaries go on to the consent agenda so that the board is well aware of what feedback the committee is providing, especially as it pertains to policy revisions and other initiatives and decisions that the board will be making. Those will be reviewed and considered prior to those decisions. The place we'd like to get to is when a policy comes forward to the school board for revision, it is also accompanied by the equity checklist. We would also like to be in a place where those things would come with feedback from the evac, and the board would be asking the question, what did the employee group say about this? Where is their input? Those recommendations, if there are recommendations around operational decisions, those are going to the superintendent and the cabinet. That information, those summaries and other information about the topics and issues that the evac is discussing, will go on to a webpage set up either on our new SharePoint site or something similar to Division Compass. When the meeting has completed and that summary is finalized, notification can go out to all employees who can go to that site and see evac met. They discussed the policy on, let's say, student discipline, and they provided the following feedback and input related to the upcoming revision. So that webpage will go into development, and that site and process will go into development very quickly after the evac establishes itself. Next steps, communicating the evac, the process, to the executive leadership team so that they're aware of their responsibility to inform employees in schools and departments about the evac and how they can put their name forward for a place on the committee. Information goes out to all school division employees through Compass and through other means that we communicate with our employees to make sure they are aware of how they can come forward to be part of this team. You heard a little bit about an independent moderator, so we'll find that individual who will guide us through our first year of work, and as the team is formed and comes together, that first meeting is going to be organizational and will rely on some training around the process we'll use so that every voice is heard in the meeting and that we're coming to consensus to the extent possible around decisions. Evac representatives will then be selected and will launch that organizational meeting. That is our proposal. We're open for questions and discussion.
Just one quick question. Initially, maybe I didn't see it here. How many members are there going to be? Is it 23, or is it 35, or is it another number?
It's most likely going to come in somewhere around 50 members. So remember, there's one from each school and then one from each department. It's very important to us that the committee be representative demographically, positions and responsibilities, and if the people that are coming forward through the process for schools and departments, if we see there are voices that are not on the table, then, or at the table, I'm sorry, then we want to be sure that they are having the opportunity to be there at the table, so we will solicit additional representatives. Additionally, it would be the AEA providing a teacher and a classified staff member, so that we are estimating that'll come out to about 50.
Thank you.
I guess I'm questioning whether that would always meet as a committee as a whole, or would it be broken up into subcommittees, or, I mean, that's a lot of people for anybody to get a voice in. I mean, maybe it's not, but it sounds like a lot.
So the committee did wrestle with that issue around what is the right size. Major themes in the discussion at the steering team were around representation and ensuring we do have voices. We've got to make sure there's representatives from each level, representatives from our feeder patterns, from our more diverse and less affluent schools, as well as our most affluent schools. We do see times that the group may break up into smaller working groups depending on the topic. If the committee is tackling, say, the homework policy, that's going to be extremely relevant to teachers on the committee, but potentially less relevant to drivers, nurses, EDEP may want to weigh in or not, depending. So we'll tailor some of that work depending on the topic.
So I'm curious about this line that's on a different side. Under "school board participation," it says, "Recommendations must be reviewed and considered prior to related decisions being made." Is that part of the meeting summaries being on the consent agenda, or is there going to be more representation of that?
Those would be the summaries being on the consent agenda so that the board is aware of what the committee is providing.
Is that all for you, Judy?
I mean, yeah, I just didn't know if you were mid-thought.
Yep.
For the financial impact, which I'm assuming there's going to be some because there's going to be an independent moderator, website development, the teachers are going to be meeting during non-student time, but, so that, I guess, maybe isn't one. But is that all going to be ready for the next, it's going to be included in this upcoming budget? We're going to have clarity around that?
We would see that coming in the next budget proposal, and a lot of that time will be during employees' current paid time. For those who are not, of course, we would pay them.
So what is the measure of success? How will we know if this is a success?
I think what becomes institutionalized when that importance of employee feedback coming to the board as decisions are made, that it is part of the policy that comes to the board for revision. The employee feedback is there with the equity checklist, with other materials, so that you have in front of you, here's what the employees are saying about this change. As we institutionalize those processes of feedback into budget development and other regular decisions that are big decisions the board is making, that is the biggest measure of success. I think trickle-down measures that we might be able to quantify would be in our engagement survey, seeing the indicator around having a voice in decisions that are made increase. That would be a quantifiable measure.
The other thing I think I either heard you say, or I heard Dr. Kaiser say, was a measure for success will be when a board member says, like during the presentation earlier, a board member says, you know, what did the EVACC think about this? So as you said, it becomes institutionalized and part of the way we do things. And that would apply to me, too, saying, what did the EVACC say about this?
So I'm understanding, I believe we had someone who did a public comment that said there is no quantitative accountability as part of the structure. So this page is kind of the key page here. This is, so if we anticipate this in a year, we're going to have a process whereby when we make a decision that affects a teacher, we get a report included that's from evac talking about what their recommendation is. Okay, I guess that's, yeah.
Are there any other questions or discussions with board members?
I mean, I guess, piggybacking on to what you said, Katrina, I wonder if there would be a more active part of that, if that would ever be like a recommendation that's presented to us? I know that, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what it's kind of missing is the presentation of something, but it's almost like they're getting more in some sense because they'd be getting to give a voice on all decisions presumably that are going to affect them by having the report, but it's almost like they could also, but I, the whole thing is, this is presented from the employee, so if this is what they've decided they want, I guess I'm, but I, it kind of feels like it's missing a report out to us, but I don't know.
I think the proof is going to be in the pudding once the recommendations are reviewed and approved, and if that's done to a satisfactory level, then it could be a real positive.
If I could just jump in, one of the conversations that we had was exactly, how does it, how does it kind of have some teeth? How do we make sure that you all really do understand where the, pick the topic where, you know, where the group stands on it after they've gotten feedback from their constituents? And the reason why it was proposed that we put it on the consent agenda was because we do know that that is something that the board does read, is aware of, and votes on at each meeting, and so there, we felt that that gave it a little bit of teeth that way. That said, you know, we definitely can come and do presentations like this, and, you know, we anticipate that within the, one of the things that the group talked about was they, kind of a flattened hierarchy within the group, so, but that said, we will also have some people that will kind of emerge to help with agendas and things like that, and if it's the, if it is the board's desire or the group's desire, very honestly, to come in and present something out, if there's a topic, you know, I think we could definitely do that. The one thing that I think is really important is we, in things that we've heard from the beginning all the way through, is we want to make sure that we are being proactive in things. So sometimes we hear from people when a decision has been made and they haven't been able to have input on the front end of it, and so those are the things that we want to make sure that we are really kind of going after. So, you know, going back to what's a measure of success, I think if we find that we are able to get on the front end of things. Obviously, there are decisions that are made all the time around any number of topics, and, you know, we, I do think that this is something that will gain momentum as we, as the group comes together, works together, is trained, and we kind of figure out all the nuances. You know, we've got, in the document of the process, we've got a kind of a proposed what the, what a meeting would look like, but that's going to morph and develop as we get there. So, and I would say the same thing about the topics that we're talking about, and so, you know, it is something that I think that hearing from our employees, I think, is incredibly important, and I think that, you know, if the board feels that it would be better to present what the group's recommendations are, we can gladly do that. We can do it as an "and" with the consent agenda as well.
One thing I think is important, I see that two board members are invited. I think it's essential that we show up when we're invited, too, so.
Absolutely. And I will say from the beginning, the, in a couple of the things that we heard loud and clear from the Employee Voice Committee, from the Steering Team Committee, I'm trying to decide, distinguish between the two, from the steering team is the fact that the, really felt important, that it was important that the board engage in this work and in hearing them, and I do think, to your point, I think the board members being there is a critical piece of this. And obviously, you don't have to just be there, we would hope that you would engage in the conversation as well.
How does this, so I understand it, work with the AEA as well? So they, like, a teacher has the ability, I guess, to, we're still meeting with AEA regularly, so there's almost like there's two avenues for them to, this is more a general approach?
Sure, there are actually a couple of different avenues. Obviously, we will continue, we have our monthly AEA exchange meetings, we will continue to meet with them outside of this, but we also obviously felt like it was very important for them to have very intentional representation on the committee. There may be other people on the committee who are AEA members, but we definitely want the AEA to identify a couple of people to be on the committee. The other thing is we have some other avenues as well. We have our teacher advisory, employee, classified employee advisory, those types of things. And so, you know, we've actually had the question, how are they different? And very honestly, there are, it's multiple avenues to be heard. I think that when I think about some of the teacher advisory, things that we've done, at least in the past, we hear both proactive discussions and reactive discussions, and so I actually think that we can hear things from different places, and that's one of the ways that it gets also into the, into the employee voice. The thing that I think is different about the way that the EVAC is set up is that it's intended that the group will solicit feedback from all of their constituents. So we have a conversation, they go back, they help people learn, they get feedback. We really want to shift from opinion-based thoughts and decisions to We really want to shift from opinion-based thoughts and decisions to fact-based ones, and I think that's going to be a really important piece. I think it's going to be a great learning opportunity and a great feedback opportunity from across the entire division, not just a small group of people that are meeting in different venues.
What was the thinking around inviting two board members to each meeting instead of having two board members who serve on that?
So that's actually something that, you know, if the board would like to discuss it and weigh in on, we are open to that. We did wrestle with what type of committee this should be. We know that we, with, to the, what you just described is, we could really look at this as a board advisory committee. We also talked about it as a superintendent's advisory committee, and because of some conversations, very honestly, from, and desires of the team, we, that's why we kind of came into the middle with kind of it being a focus group out of the Human Resources Department. One of the things that we heard loud and clear from the team members was the desire for confidentiality, and one of the things that we know is as a board advisory group, that that is basically a public meeting, and that was some of the concern there. That said, it could be that. I do, you know, going back to what is a measure of success, I think one of the things that we will start to hear, if we see a measure of success, we would hear that trust exists. So that might be something that down the road may not be, the confidentiality piece may not be an issue, but I think that initially it is something that was very much a concern of the board. I'm sorry, not of the board, of the Steering Team.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, and I may have missed this in part of this presentation, but, so, the representation of staff and then representation from the school board, and then what is the representation from, like, the superintendent's office, like, who all is going to be a part of that?
In, I can't remember what pages it is in the document, it's about page two or three or four, it's one of the earlier sections. It's, as far as the, kind of the non-voting members, it's the school board's invited, obviously the moderator who we hire would be a non-voting member, and then the superintendent or designee, and the executive director of Human Resources.
Is that it? Okay, thank you, Dr. Kaiser and Mr. Reddick.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Frazier.
We will now move to High School Redesign, and this will be introduced by Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, board members. I know you're excited for our last piece of school division business.
I think you're excited.
I'm excited. I'd be excited if I could figure out how to get this going. Whoops. Oh, good gracious, where'd it go? That's not it, not it. All right. Thanks, Patrick. I just wanted Patrick to come up in front of you guys today.
You got to move. I almost heard what it said.
Good evening. Jay Thomas, Executive Director, Secondary Education. I'm excited to stand up here in front of you guys today and, once again, be able to talk about some components of High School Redesign. I do want to thank, we have five of our administrators from our high school representing our high schools here this evening with us as well, so I wanted to thank them all for a long evening being with us. So along with a couple of our colleagues like to present High School Overview Design, we're going to talk specifically about freshman seminar and career learning communities. And I think you'll very clearly see through the presentation that the commitment to the authentic challenge and relevant learning experience for students and definitely getting to know each of our students. Just a quick reminder, the timeline, we've been talking about High School Reddesign and several different components and several different names, can't hear me, over the last number of years. Back in 2015, we called it High School 2022, getting folks together, teachers, administrators, central office staff, talking about what schools can look like, what can we do to enhance opportunities specifically for our students. Then in 2017, we had the FNNI study, FNNI study, that actually said, let's move to a center model. If you remember, Alamoore High School was just overcrowded, and we were using actually closets to re-institute and have places for teachers, just to go to make calls and do some work, and so we went to the center model, is what the board at the time voted on. So we've implemented Center One since that time in a number of programs, and these were the components of High School or are the components of High School Reddesign as we go through. So I won't read everything on the left to you as a reminder, but facilities construction, learning management system, curriculum assessment instruction, updates to the program of studies, and the last component that we have to fully implement is our career learning communities, which we'll be implementing at the end of November. We're really excited about that. And what I put in front of you guys also is just a reminder of the logic map that we built several years ago to show what are we trying to accomplish, what's short-term, medium-term, what's our overarching outcomes that we're looking for. We're excited that we're hitting many of those, adjusting to the ones that we're not hitting, and that the next time we present to you guys after this, we will have all those components fully implemented, and it'll be a chance for us to come and give you an update on what's working, what we need to tweak, and where we are. So we're really excited about that. So freshman seminar is something we wanted to put back in front of you guys, we've been doing for a couple of years, so actually have a couple of folks with us today. I know Amber Roberts is here, and I'm going to turn it over to Megan Maynard to present. Thank you.
Good morning, good evening, actually, members of the board. I'm Megan Maynard, I'm a lead coach for Korean Technical Education, and I'm here to share with you a little bit about freshman seminar. Maybe if I can find the mouse. Implementation of freshman seminar as a course is aligned to our strategic plan of affirming and empowering communities in Goal Two. You'll hear tonight about how that supports the health and mental wellness of our students. The freshman seminar course is aligned to the VDOE Standards for Social Emotional Learning and based on the CASL framework, which stands for Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning. Virginia defines social emotional learning as "the process through which young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitude to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals. Feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and maintain responsible and caring decisions." The CASL framework emphasizes the importance of a systemic approach in which an entire school community commits to layering the social emotional learning throughout the student's experience. Here you can see the mission of Alamoore County Public Schools Seminar, and specifically freshman seminar, the goal is to transition into high school, where students can find their voice, develop positive relationships with their peers and a teacher mentor, and begin to foster a sense of belonging to the school community. Here you can see a little bit about the format of the freshman seminar, which does meet for 90 minutes every other day, and you can see the five components of freshman seminar, which are related back to the CASL framework. Groups of teachers began back in 2017 and 2018 to draft the freshman seminar curriculum. The year after that was piloting the curriculum, and in the 1920 school year, you can see that freshman seminar was continued to be implemented, but we did transition to a hybrid check and connect with the focus on social emotional learning when we went to a virtual and hybrid learning in the high school. Coming back in person full-time last year, freshman seminar teachers further identified areas to improve the curriculum based on what they learned from the previous two years, as well as their time in the virtual and hybrid times with students, and we used that to update the curriculum over the summer. We also improved a structure around academic advisory, and that has been implemented this year. This year is really our first, our third full year of implementation. As such, we are planning formal feedback loops with stakeholders to include students, families, and of course, staff for suggestions on our curriculum and programming. We had invited a few of our teachers who have been instrumental to this program for many years to come and speak tonight, but due to the late timing of this presentation and that they have to teach early in the morning tomorrow, we asked them instead to switch and send us a brief video sharing their voice. So the power of their voice really speaks to the mission of seminar, as well as our mission with Alamoore County Public Schools of thriving students.
My name is Lori Rocco, and I'm the seminar lead at Monticello High School. I've been involved in the seminar program since its beginning. I taught it for three years and have now been the coordinator at Monticello for two years. It's an important program because social emotional learning is vital for our students. We have lessons that help students understand their emotions, how to manage their behaviors, how to empathize with others, and build relationships in their seminar community, and how to
I feel like that could be a meme.
Make good
We need better broadband in this county.
Choices. One of my favorite parts of seminar is that we keep the sections the same year after year, so the students travel together throughout high school. This allows them to build strong bonds during their four years together. When I taught freshman seminar, the first thing I told them was I was going to be their go-to person. I was going to help them navigate and survive high school, that I'd be there for them no matter what, that I was their school mom, which meant, yes, I'd nag them about their grades for the next four years. I was going to be them, be there for them from freshman year until they walked across the stage of graduation and even afterward. It's an amazing experience to spend four years with the same group of students, to see how they evolve and mature. Seminar is definitely an important piece of the high school puzzle. Every single year, we review the lessons and make changes where necessary in an effort to keep the lessons relevant and engaging. We are constantly trying to improve the program. I'd hate to see anything taken away from the program, as I can feel the momentum continuing to build. If anything, we need to put more resources into seminars to make them a core part of every student's and teacher's experience in high school.
Hi, my name is Abby Spreg, and I'm a freshman seminar teacher at Alamoore High School. I started teaching at Alamoore in 2020, so I started all virtual. That year, I was given two or three freshman seminar classes, and this is something that I had never heard of before, but I knew that I would be good at because I love connecting with students and building relationships. Obviously, we know that this course is focused on social emotional learning, study skills, connecting with students, community service, but that year, it really became a place where my students could kind of just come, connect with each other, connect with a teacher, without having any expectations placed on them. And I think that for those students and for me, it was a really good place and a safe haven for them to come to, and it became, it became something that we hadn't planned on it being, especially in that virtual setting, but it truly fulfilled what the mission of freshman seminar is. This is my first year teaching it in person, and I am truly loving connecting with students. Students come all the time, the more they get to know me with questions about other things going on at school, how do I do this, how do we do that? As they see that I am open to really any conversations and questions that they might have, I feel kind of their walls coming down, and they begin to trust not only me, but their classmates. That's what this is about, connecting with each other, connecting with their peers and adults, knowing that they have people who are on their side and who are willing to help them through whatever they need in their transition to high school and beyond. So that's why I love this, and that's why I am so passionate about freshman seminar. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Linda Fine, and I've been part of the freshman seminar program since it began five years ago. As you know, freshman seminar is about social emotional learning, academic advisory or skill building, it's about community service, it's about relationships, and if I had to choose one of those to talk about, it was relationships. But I can't talk about just one student, because my memories of Cole and helping him navigate his freshman year after being away at the virtual school took longer than my 30 seconds. And when I talked about Cristo and how, as a freshman, he didn't know what elective to take, and so everyone was signing up for one, and I said, well, let's focus on what you want to do, what your goals are. And he chose photography, and he's still a photographer and wants to study it next year when he goes off to college. And I could go on and on about all the Coles and all the Cristos, but then I'd be forgetting about the great work that we did for the United Way Day of Caring just a month ago, where we took 150 kids off campus to read to elementary school kids and to volunteer at the Crowe's A Library, and all the great things and how the kids got excited about their community service work. Or we could talk about the academic successes that our students are starting to have as they're learning the skills that they've lost because of COVID, and we are supplementing that in our academic advisory each week. But I've already gone over my minute and a half. Please consider continuing with freshman seminar. It's an amazing program.
There we go, it's a little bit quicker this time.
My name is Lori Rocco.
There. All right. At this time, we're happy to take any questions or feedback.
I remember when freshman seminar got started, and in talking with teachers, there were some challenges to it for them, in that some of them weren't really into it, some of them didn't really understand it, and so as a result, the kids weren't getting as much out of it. You know, how are you selecting teachers now? And I want to just preface it by saying, those three women were fabulous. And, you know, and if you're building a cadre of teachers who want to do it, who get it, and can really bring it to life and all the value that it's supposed to bring, that's great. Originally, it was a rotation of teachers, if I remember right. You are right. And so that was where I think it got into the challenges for some teachers, you know, and so are you kind of staying with the same group now and just building it out?
No, so you're right, John. The original idea was, as you're building this out, that each teacher, over a span of four years, would have one freshman seminar class, that then they would be the mentor for that, those students, that small group of students, sophomore, junior, senior year. And yes, those three people that are up are obviously very passionate about freshman seminar, and there's others who are very passionate about it as well, and others have had a little bit harder time. That's why we started the coordinator position as well, so they could do some training and support the administrators that are here in the building and helping the teachers understand the curriculum, the power of building those relationships with the kids and what it looks like. So that's the idea about that. The reality is, when the principals are scheduling, sometimes, as you heard like Abby say, you know, hey, I was given two sections of seminar this year, and then she did one, or you heard Lori talk, I had it three years in a row, now I'm just the coordinator, because then it gets harder and harder to follow those kids in a small group together as you go through. So the high schools, because again, I know COVID was kind of the sticky wicket for everybody going through, but we really turned that more into a check and connect during that virtual year with seminar. that virtual year with seminar. And it's kind of been a reset for the principals, if they get back, you know, to, to, to the normal school year and try and to reestablish those fundamentals of, take a freshman year, see it through your senior year, and next group comes in and does the same thing.
Okay.
Not as easy as it sounds, though, to, to put together when you're building a master schedule, to be quite honest.
Yeah.
I have outstanding questions that don't need to be answered tonight, but I will just say, I do have questions about freshman, freshman seminar, and they weren't necessarily answered by this presentation. I really liked the one we had on the middle school advisory that we're starting, where it really gets into the nitty gritty of like the curriculum, the goals, what we're doing. Again, just give one story, which is that when I was a teacher, we started an advisory, and we were just given broad goals about what to do, basically build relationships with your students. I chose rubber duck theme, and like my kids would work towards earning little rubber ducks. Another teacher did a whole lesson around what music you listen to and what messages you're getting, and he picked a song, and they picked the part, the lyrics about how they're actually pretty degrading to women. Another teacher used that same song to do a dance routine with all his students, like a coordinated dance routine. So, all that to say, I think as a board, we've heard quite a bit of feedback about freshman seminar, and it's not been the positive things that we're hearing. And so, even though I'm not saying it's not a positive experience, but those are the kind of questions, like I'm just, that's what I'm more curious about. Because I believe, I believe everyone who spoke today that it's, it's incredibly impactful and meaningful for them, but I'm more curious about just the broad level. Do we have an established curriculum? How do we decide on that? How are the teachers trained in it? And that can be later off.
Yeah, and I can, we can share all that with you. Actually, Amber's been very instrumental in helping reset and also align our, our, our standards to the VDOE SCL standards. So that's overlay this year, so first year we've overlaid those, so you can see the correlation between those. So we can send you that whole curriculum. And as she said earlier, Megan said earlier, we're going to be resetting with some surveys and feedback from our staff and our parents and our teachers this year throughout freshman seminar, get some feedback on what's working as we've reestablished coming back from COVID. So hopefully that'll answer your questions, we can get you some of that information.
And then also, as part of that, I'm interested to know what measures of success there are, like what that will look like.
Absolutely.
Okay, I had a question. Hi, I'm Brisa, I feel like I should introduce myself, student rep. Okay, so maybe I'm just getting the student perspective here, so I feel like that's kind of what I care about, like what student input did you get, if any? Because I feel like I'm not getting the same type of energy that I saw in this video. Like here, I see it as like this wonderful thing of like, oh my gosh, it's going to help me throughout my four years of high school, but it's like, I don't think I've ever heard of a student say that.
Well, and that, that's how it should be, right? I mean, so that's how it should be, so then we need to figure out, what do we need to do to help support our teachers to make, make that happen, right? So social emotional skills, as we, we read through Castle and these standards, will tell you that it's best when it's blended through all of your courses and curriculum. But if we have a hard time as educators just doing it in a set class, then we've got to continue to do some professional training for our staff to get them there. So not only can they do it in freshman seminar, but they can do it in their math class, in their science class, in their social studies class, to build relationships, to make, make the, the content that the teacher's so passionate about that that's what they got their degree in, come to life for all of our kids, to help close the gaps that we've been talking about tonight, in, in, in all of our subject areas, for all of our enrollment groups. So that's where we need to be for everybody. We are there in a number of areas, but we're not there with everybody. So yes, we have some work to do, but that's what it should look like.
Okay. Are you also working on adding more diversity to it? Because I feel like what I saw here was like a majority of white women. Are we adding like more
Those are the coordinators from the school. Well, everybody should have it, so what, I mean, it should be as diverse as the school is hired, because everybody should have a section of it, everybody.
Okay, and as freshman seminar, like, maybe it's just because I didn't take it personally, because I am an avid student, like, I saw some stuff about community service, like, are they working with K Club? Like, are they working with other clubs in the school? Like, how are they immersing the student?
So Avid is overlaid with social emotional, our social emotional theme that we've got. That's why, if you're taking Avid, it's very intertwined to what you're doing with freshman seminar. We've been a part of, of, I've started Avid in three of the schools that I've worked in, Amber's been right by my side the whole time we did it at Almarrow High School. And so as we were building this out, and we were sitting down back in, what was it, 2018, building out the curriculum and the pilot, so many things that we were doing in Avid just roll into exactly what seminar is. So what we told the freshman Avid classes is, these are the components we feel like you're missing, you need to incorporate in, and then in, instead of making kids do the Avid and the freshman seminar, it really kind of overlaid.
Okay.
I'm not sure about your club question, I don't quite understand that.
No, okay, I feel like, I'm just trying to like see, how does freshman seminar like actually help the student like immerse themselves into the building, into like all the like clubs that we have, into all the extra curriculars that are available, like?
Yeah.
It's like, I get the whole thing of like trying to like build community, but that really feels more like a concept rather than like a specific thing.
I mean, so that's a big part of what they're doing, I think you heard Lori Rocco talk about that, and we had some testimonials from her kids, we weren't able to get them from the other schools, so we didn't put those in, but that's something we'll do throughout the year, and get more diverse voice from their students and hear what's working, what's not working, and be able to share that. But that is a big component of that, and I think you heard her talk about the child that didn't understand what electives they should take and why, and being able to sit down with that child, and that's part of that relationship building that's so important in freshman seminar, to have that one person, right? And hopefully that child has multiple people they can go to, I'm sure they do, but built that relationship with Ms. Rocco and was able to sit down and say, hey, help me understand what these electives are, so that that child knew they had somebody they can go to. And then, wonderful story, right? She says, what are you passionate about? He says, hey, I'm passionate about photography. So he takes photography, and now wants to actually study in college. So, I mean, I think that's, that's part of what they're doing. We talk about the career learning communities, and they spend time with those sharing all those opportunities that kids can take throughout the schools. They help with club days. At Western, they talked about the United Way Day of Caring and getting the kids involved in community service, all those kind of things. So, so there's a lot of components to it. When we share it with the board, we'll make sure that the, the curriculum is shared with you as well.
And surveys? Student surveys?
The surveys are, yes.
I love doing surveys.
Yes.
I don't, no one likes doing that.
Did you consider maybe having a focus group of just random students, putting some random students together and listening to how they feel about it?
Yeah, so Ellen, what we did the first year is actually, we embedded, I spent a semester, as well as Maureen and some other folks, in, in a freshman seminar class, classroom. I actually went over to, to Monticello High School and spent the first semester once a week in the seminar classroom and learned with the kids what was working, what was not working. So we have, have done some of that, we absolutely, and that's one of the things we're going to do this year, as we were talking about the survey, re-circle back with the kids as we reset our curriculum, what's working, what's not working, what do we need to adjust? So, good suggestion.
I've gotten some feedback from particularly like arts teachers in high school about it limiting the ability, like dedicating that time, sort of limits the ability for kids to take electives. Do we have, as part of this, you know, what you're gathering for us, do you have any information about whether elective choices or kids taking electives are down since high school seminar has started? I would be interested to know that.
I'm trying to think off the top of my head if I have that. I don't, I don't know, I, I, let me, let me look into that, you can get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, but I know our electives have gone up, I mean, so in, in choices and opportunities, so let me just see what that looks like, since we actually started seminar.
Yeah.
Because what, what I remember seeing is, your study hall's going down and a lot of that being replaced there, but let me, let me look into that and get that to you.
Great, thank you.
All right. All right, so with that, we are going to actually transition to our career learning communities. I'm going to invite Katina Dudley up to speak about our career learning communities.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Katina Dudley. I'm a lead coach for science, and you also know that I'm a lead coach for family life education. Tonight, we are highlighting one of the components of high school redesign, the career learning communities. We have presented this component various times, as you might be familiar with the terms academies or academies of Almarrow. We have now landed on career learning communities, because this identifies two critical components of this work. One is skill development for careers, and two is cohort learning in small communities within a larger school community. Through the work of this past year, we've also developed a scope and sequence that we would like to share with you tonight. As part of our strategic plan, Almarrow County Public Schools will increase student engagement in their own learning. One strategy for this objective will include the development of learning pathways that are aligned to Virginia's career clusters. There are 17 of those clusters put out by the VDOE. This development and implementation of career learning communities are aligned to Goal One, Objective Two, and Goal One, Objective Three. Our career learning communities are designed as purposeful groupings of the 17 career clusters around similar skill sets. You can see the CLCs that we plan to offer in Almarrow County Public Schools. These names have evolved as teachers have dug into some of the research and into some of the surveys that we have gotten back from our students. I wanted to take a minute to review the timeline of the scope of this work. As Mr. Thomas mentioned earlier, in 2017, there was a review of high school facilities that included a planning study, which led to high school redesign. As a result of this study, we began working towards the fall 2023 launch of career learning communities. We have had several community conversations with families, students, faculty, and staff, with additional presentations shared with principals and school counselors that included updates along the way. In this slide are the presentations and the invitations that were shared with our families, faculty, and staff. Over the past six months, we have had over 40 secondary teachers. I highlight secondary because we've had middle and high school teachers involved in this work, working on the development of these career learning communities. This slide shared with you tonight highlights, this slide presentation shared with you tonight will highlight the teacher's input and the outcomes of the work. This is really exciting, I feel like we've been working on this for a really long time. Okay, as an overview of a career learning community, teachers landed on this scope and sequence that you see here on this slide. This scope and sequence is aligned to our vision of high school redesign, developing communities with a cohort focus, including opportunities for choice in student coursework, and addressing social emotional needs. As you see here, there are two components to each CLC, the courses and the connections to the career learning community. As teachers develop pathways for coursework, they included a gateway and a capstone course that are cohort focused, and you will see that those are on both sides of the career learning community. Students will be oriented to the career learning community and the various pathways that will be available to them in the gateway course. The pathway sequence provides an opportunity for student choice as well. Students will follow that sequence for two years, so we're looking at this middle sequence here. Students will follow this sequence for two years, and during their second year, they will concurrently enroll in a capstone course. The capstone course will provide opportunities for authentic field experiences aligned to pathways, connected to community partners, in order to achieve co-constructed learning targets within the path, within the career learning community. Pathway plus course that you will see at the bottom will be aligned to the career learning community and will provide an additional opportunity for student choice, and this particular course can be taken at any time during the three years of the career learning community. In each CLC, students will be expected to engage in at least one work-based learning opportunity, one burst, one work-based learning experience. And this just lists the various ways students could engage in these work-based learning experiences. So they could be anywhere from a mentorship, to an internship, job shadowing, service learning, et cetera. You will also see on the samples that each learning community provide, provides opportunities for students to achieve an industry credential within that pathway. And when we see these sample slides, you'll see that there are various credentials that students can earn through that career learning community, but some of those credentials will be aligned to the pathway sequence, and I think that may make sense to you as you look through these. Earlier tonight, you heard our human resources reference the Teachers for Tomorrow program. So in this slide deck, you'll see that there's an example for each of the career learning communities. I'm just going to use the Education and Human Development as an example of how this aligns to the template that you, that I just reviewed with you. So this is the Education and Human Development Career Learning Community. All students entering into the Education and Human Development Learning Community will take the Introduction to Family and Human Services, and that will be a cohort design class. So every student will start that class together. They will learn about the two pathways in education and in human development. Students in the Education and Human Development will take the Teachers for Tomorrow I and the Teachers for Tomorrow II, and then as their capstone, all of the students will come together again for the Psychology II Application and Research. The students will have a choice between the Education or the Human Development pathway, and then the students will have the choice between which pathway plus class they would like to enroll in. So for one career learning community, students will be expected to engage in five courses at a minimum. Students could take more. A student in the Education pathway may do an internship at one of our local schools, at a child development center. Actually, this particular group of teachers reached out to Java, they also reached out to several adult centers to see what type of opportunities students might have for the human development. So yes, we thought about the K through 12 spectrum, but these teachers also went preschool and for our adults that may need extra support from our students as well. Students in this particular career learning community have some options for credentials, and those are listed in highlights, and the ones that are underlined have a link to the credentials if you'd want to learn more about them. During our gallery walk, one of our teams talked about the Board of Education Seal of Biliteracy, and all of our groups and teachers started asking about that seal of biliteracy, and you will now see that as an extra credential are included in all of our career learning communities. So those are all included for you to look through at another time, but you'll see some of these have two pathways, some have three pathways. Tried to ask teachers to start with three, because we didn't want to take on too much as we launched these in 2023. You will not see a sample of a three-year plan for performing or visual arts. The fine art teachers have been working to finalize the plans, and I just wanted to speak to this, because they've worked just as hard as the teachers in the other career learning communities. Because there's a unique approach to developing skills of this discipline, there has been some creativity to designing these plans of studies. We presented these challenges to the high school principals and now have some next steps that we will take with these teachers. So we have three meetings set up for this month, and the teachers will be joining, and we will be finalizing the plans for the performing and the visual arts. We slowed this work down in order not to overread programs at the base high schools. There was a lot of concern about, what about the band program at each high school? What about the choir program at each high school? What about the drama program at each high school? And the teachers' concerns are valid, and so we wanted to just slow down and make sure we implemented this right. So we will be working with teachers this month, and I think our last meeting is the first week of November, and we'll have those plans finalized, finalized. We'd also like to present to you the locations of the CLCs and why they are located at these sites. We have used multiple pieces of evidence to inform the decisions shared on these slides, which include interest surveys from students in seventh grade. We have about three years of interest surveys. We started with our current ninth graders to start collecting data on their interest, and then literally last week, we also had data from our current ninth graders. We also looked at site capacity, we also looked and considered partnership expansion for these career learning communities, and we looked at building design. We do not want to put a CLC that has a lot of interest into a building that cannot accommodate the enrollment request. Second, we would like to place CLCs at a site where community partners are accessible to students for work-based learning experiences. And finally, we know that some of our sites are, already have learning spaces that will provide learning environments to support the experiences for these students. The numbers you see on the slides here, so 141, for this particular data, this is from our seventh graders, their current eighth grader, so this was in the spring of 2022. We allowed these students to pick as many learning communities as they would, were interested. We had 750 students participate, and the data includes 2,954 data points, so many students students chose many learning communities. And then we also have, we're going to keep the information communication technology at Center One. And then we also highlighted the student interest that we see at K-Tech as well. This is the data that we just recently received from our current ninth graders. And with this particular data, the ninth graders chose one of the career learning communities. And so this highlights, I think we had 701 ninth graders in this particular data. In conclusion, we would like to highlight the expansion of CLCs to include social sciences and the performing and visual arts. Many times as we have presented to families, one of the things that many of us have heard over and over again is adults saying, I would love to go back to high school just to experience these opportunities. And that's really cool to hear from our families, to think about the experiences for their students. I'm also happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks for staying this late, Katina.
You're welcome.
This is really pulling apart the academy model, right? Or is it? Or how is it?
I wouldn't say it's pulling apart the academy model.
Into the component pieces.
Four-year program to a three-year program. We're really trying to maintain some of the components that the academy teachers valued, and that is the cohort model. They felt like that was really important for students.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The cohort model, where students are together in that class, and students are around other students that share the same interest. We know teachers valued that, so we really tried to make sure, to ensure that we had that at the start and at the finish, so students would come together for that. We also wanted to also consider student interest in this too, which is why you see those pathways kind of venturing a little bit differently in that junior year. But I think what you'll see with those pathways is you'll see that students will still remain as a cohort, but they'll also have students that are not in the career learning community possibly taking those classes as well. But I think those are also student choice for elective courses that they enroll in as well.
I thought it was interesting, so many of the students chose social justice and world affairs. I don't know why, just thought that was interesting. My granddaughter is going that route too, so who knows?
And I will tell you, the teachers really broke apart the data because you'll also notice that HART, Hospital Eateries, et cetera, used to be hospitality and tourism. And what they found was students didn't check hospitality and tourism in the data, but when they looked at the survey and the programs that students were interested in, there was over 200 responses for hospitality and tourism. When the kids asked, do you like to cook? Do you like to work? The restaurants, all these things that are now included in that title. We think students might have been connecting hospitality and tourism to hospitals, and that's why they weren't selecting it. Because when you look at our newer data, you'll see that culinary arts had 220 students' interests or 220 selections. And then you can see here, that number has gone up since students have a better understanding of what that is.
How does this curriculum impact the teacher skills we have? Or, I mean, do we have the right faculty? Or I don't know what I'm asking.
That, so that's one of the questions the principals were asking. Where will career learning communities be located so that they can look at what faculty they'll need and what expertise some of those faculty will need to be able to teach some of the courses? That's one of the requests from the principals that they've asked for when this moves forward so that they can look at that. And what are the endorsements for those teachers?
Does this model have more?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut?
No, no, you're good. Does this model have a more intense impact on transportation problems than you've had?
More intense?
Is there more moving around to different places to get these?
I think our current model, we have students moving around.
Right. So I'm just wondering if this increases that.
And we're going from school to school.
So so one of the things we've been doing, I actually met with Charmaine and have been talking to Rosalind about what this will look like. One of the differences is, as Katina said, yes, right now, we have kids in the academy model who are going to two different schools. So if I'm a Western student, decided to go to Mesa, I became an Almar High School student, and they had to figure out how to get transportation over there. We already have that model set up with K-Tech and with Center One. So now the difference for them is figuring out, and so we'll work in conjunction as we build this out over the next couple months with registration of that timeline of when transportation needs to know. Because the difference now is students maintain their base school identity. So no longer will a Western student have to say, I'm becoming a Monticello High School student. They maintain their base school identity at Western one day, and they go over to Monticello High School and do the NDCC program, but then come back to their base school. Now, that that will be a little bit of a change for transportation. So they'll just need those numbers so they can figure out the best way to transport back and forth. So I've been working with transportation, will continue. In fact, we talked about having a monthly meeting starting in November for the remainder of the year, just touching base and seeing where we are and what they need as they go through. Does that answer what you were asking, Judy?
Well, I appreciate the communication that you're having, but you know, numbers really matter.
Numbers will matter.
Because obviously, we're having a lot of transportation issues. So I'm just curious of this. So it sounds like this is a bit of a center model, but the centers are the comprehensive high schools, right?
That's exactly right.
Okay. So and I don't know what percentage of our students currently are involved in an academy outside of their, what would have been their base school. So I have no idea what impact this will have on transportation, and that is what I'm looking for.
Yeah. And that's why we put the numbers up there. And honestly, we won't know. We'll start registering right at the end of November, beginning of December at the high schools. So we should have some pretty decent numbers by the end of January to put in front of transportation and say, what works, what doesn't, what do you need help with?
We do currently run shuttles from Almar to Western, Almar to Monticello daily. So we have shuttles that currently run daily because we have an academy at each school. And with this new model, we'll continue to have a shuttle that runs daily between the schools.
And they run to the lab school, they run to Center One. So the shuttles, the shuttles, so with, as you know, you just do the elementary runs, and then you do the middle and high school runs, and then the shuttles run. So it's in, it's in the, it's in between. You know, ideally, there are one-offs, there are some different things they do to try to assist students with individual needs. But the the movement of the kids to go to the different schools is in between the runs to get the kids to the schools.
Right.
So it doesn't put as much pressure on on those times that are critical. And what happens is the the academies that we currently do, as well as the the Center One and K-Tech, places like that, they've got, they adapt their starting to as the kids arrive. So it's like a different kind of start. Because I've been over at Center One when the kids start coming in, and it's not just, it's not like it is where at a regular base school where all of a sudden, all the buses come and the kids just get out. It's, you know, kids coming in, rolling in, and then they start that way. So they have to adapt to that. But the goal is to try to keep those, keep the movement inside the the time of the day when the, when you're not running all the other routes.
So are they the same drivers, like the home to drivers?
It would be the same driver. So well, mostly the same driver. So you'll have a bus driver that'll take their kids to Almar High School. Then they wait to run a shuttle to one of the other, to one of the other places.
I mean, I guess I just, I feel like we've been talking about transportation a lot and for months and years before that truly. But it seems like here, we've created this model that appears to me to be quite transportation heavy. And I know that you're saying that it's not at the same time.
Yeah.
But I mean, still, people need to drive them, no matter what time of day it is. So I don't see in here consideration of that. And as you're saying, there is communication around that. But you know, in the beginning, when it lists all the things that go into this new high school model, it was like facilities. And I just, I wish that we were thinking about transportation in more concrete ways, because it seems like what we're buying is something that could, you know, put us in a real bind in which we already are. So I really, we need to have more information on that.
Yeah. And one of the things, Judy, to add to, this year, and several of the reasons we went to the 10 through 12 model versus the ninth grade is allowing kids to get to high school, catch their breath, start exploring some of these classes and opportunities you were talking about before, so they know better what they want to try. What that pulls out to help transportation is ninth graders not needing the transport to their different locations. And obviously, ninth graders, as with the vast majority of 10th graders, don't drive. So so that has helped as well. So.
In addition to transportation, how about from the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project's point of view? I mean, will this need work done in the buildings? I mean, additional spaces in in individual schools?
So we've been, John, we've been working with Lindsay as well and having conversations. For the first year in the 10th grade, we don't anticipate any needs that aren't there right now.
Okay.
For capital improvement.
But going, going out, because especially if you've got.
I think once you start looking at Center Two and things like that, you know, that would be a different conversation. But as we expand out, there's nothing right now that's on the, that's burning that we're like, we need to have this as far as a capital, capital piece. So we've invited Lindsay, we've shared the presentation with her, we're going to continue to work with Lindsay as well. In fact, she's going to be a part of that monthly conversation. In case things are coming up, we'll be working with our technology department as well. But right now, I think we have the things in place to make this successful in our schools already, hence why we actually located some of the things where we already have some of the opportunities.
Yeah, I'm so glad to hear that. I would just throw out for consideration that once you start to think about it and you could potentially see a need.
Absolutely.
Give the school board and the soups.
Absolutely.
Five years.
Okay.
I mean, no less than five years.
I got it, absolutely.
Emphasis with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
At least.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there other questions and discussion for board members?
The clock is going. Just have we completely abandoned utilizing, I hate to even say hybrid model, but I mean, some remote classes that could be built into this. I know we all still shuddering from COVID, but it seems to be there, there may be a place for some online classes that the students could do other than transport, you know, it may, it may erode their cohort, you know, interactions, but it might be useful to have it as an avenue.
What we have right now is what we had before our pandemic, your health, PEs, personal finance. So we do have some opportunities.
The marginal classes, yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Not the marginal, but.
Yeah, I mean, those are virtual classes. Kids have an option to take it face-to-face or virtual. We haven't expanded upon that. I mean, it's always something we can look at, but those are being offered in our schools in the summer and during the school year virtually.
Other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, I guess I'll jump in again and just tell you that this is amazing work, that this started with a couple board members making a field trip and learning about the academies of Hampton. And I know back then, when they came back and said, wow, we'd really like to have that here, I said, I don't know how that's ever going to happen. It started with about a $350,000 investment from our school board to redo our transportation. So we don't have the same transportation infrastructure, and it's why we know as a test case that we can actually pull this off, because we've been doing it now for close to six years. It's just going to be an increased volume. I'm really blown away by the work that you've done. I mean, this is very concrete. It's going to be, to the largest extent, cost neutral in terms of facilities, because it doesn't depend on widgets, it doesn't depend on, you know, big technology infrastructure, changes in facilities. What it's going to depend on is just having high-quality teaching and learning, and kids getting engaged with experiences. So thank you very much for bringing this vision to life. And I know our families and our students are going to be very excited about it as they get engaged with it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Thomas. This may end it. Mr. Dudley for the presentation. Is there any other business from board members or the superintendent?
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, police officers, staff, everyone who has stayed through this very long meeting. I really appreciate it, and I know it's hard, and I commend you all. I actually had today off from work, and I am feeling exhausted. So thank you.
Yeah, and I add Brisa's name to that, because understanding that you have to be at Almar tomorrow morning.
I have so many things to do. It's homecoming week, and I'm student council president.
Oh, wow.
So unlike.
Poor thing.
Yeah.
You have our deepest sympathy.
This was a challenging.
Meeting is adjourned.